Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And after we finish the pledge, we're going to have a moment of silence. We'll announce. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to have a moment of silence for Ms. Phyllis Mills, who was a long-term bus driver with Stafford County Public Schools, who retired recently and passed away unexpectedly in a house fire earlier this week. Thank you. We'd like to thank Stafford High School's Navy JROTC, members of tonight's color guard are Cadet Emily Burnett, Cadet Grace Mice, Cadet Brandon Smith, and Cadet William Truitt. The leaders of the Stafford High School JROTC program are Command Master Chief Louis Wilson, retired, and Petty Chief Officer Damian Wilson, retired. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion of second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
No.
Oh.
We have toyes.
Oh. Okay. Cast your votes.
Are these calibrated right to us since we changed seats?
Okay. Excuses, excuses, Ms. Randall. I pushed my button! What? So that's mine not working? I just did. See? We should've gone with "cast your votes," ladies.
I pressed "the" button.
All right, so you didn't...
I pressed that one.
Press your button again.
All mine's? I... all pressed. Okay, thank you. Okay. Tally the votes. Oh, surprise, surprise. All right. Motion carries, seven to oh. All right. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
No discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Do you have any announcements for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one announcement. As the board and I have been discussing since January, the need to support our constituents in our community a little bit differently and a little bit better. We set about in hiring an Executive Director of Constituent Services to tackle many of the challenges that face the school division, everything from supporting our community needs to Title IX, to working with our student code of conduct, as well as working through some of our FOIA concerns. And with that, I'm delighted to announce that the board has accepted the appointment of Dr. James Stempel as the Executive Director of Constituent Services. Dr. James Stempel, also known to many of us as simply Jim, will be assuming the role this June. Dr. Stempel serves the county with distinction for over 30 years. First, as a technical education teacher at Stafford High School, then as an assistant principal at Brookpoint High School, and then as the principal at North Stafford High School in 2004, where he has literally overseen the growth from the ground up of just about every single school administrator in school in the district in many ways. He later became the principal in 2004 of Mountain View High School, where he is the principal today, and has started many of the programs that have seen tremendous success in the school district, among which are a very strong international baccalaureate program there. He has been recognized throughout the state for his contributions to public schools and service to students, including his service as the chairman of the Executive Committee of the Virginia High School League, where I actually first met Dr. Stempel, and as a member of the Board of Directors of the Virginia Association of School... secondary school principals. He has twice been recognized as our division's Principal of the Year, including this year. Dr. Stempel is a proud graduate of Kent State University and received both his master's degree and doctor of education degrees from Virginia Polytechnic Institute State University, also known as Virginia Tech, which proves that I can forgive many sins. Dr. Stempel will start his role again this June, giving him the chance to oversee one final graduation at Mountain View High School. In his prior years at Mountain View High School, Dr. Stempel is very proud of the fact that he has been able to give his diploma, the high school diploma, to all five of the children in his household. And so, that's a very special thing. Joining Dr. Stempel tonight is his family, and I'd like to invite Dr. Stempel, if he'd like to come forward and say a few words and introduce his family. Dr. Stempel.
Thank you. I assume this is your idea of hazing, since you did not tell me that I had to say a few words. So, I am being hazed here. Thank you for the appointment and the trust that you're giving me for this position. I look forward to working with Dr. Taylor. I've known him for a few years now and look up to him. And I look forward to serving all of you in this board in this capacity. And with me tonight is my lovely wife, Sue, my oldest daughter, my oldest graduate from Mountain View, Morgan, and her boyfriend, Corey. So they're with me tonight, and that's who's with me. And so, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And of course, Dr. Stempel, you don't have to stay, but you're welcome to stay. Plenty of seating tonight. All right. Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Sandra Osborne, Director of Public and Community Relations.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Taylor. A proclamation to recognize April 2022 as National Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas April has been designated as National Autism Acceptance Month, and while autism is a pervasive development disorder affecting the social, learning, and behavioral skill of those affected by it, and whereas autism occurs in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, and whereas more and more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autistic spectrum, resulting in rates as high as one in 44 children. And whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early intervention, it is often possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas Stafford County Public Schools provides ongoing training to educate parents and professionals about autism and its effects, now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates April 2022 as National Autism Acceptance Month throughout the school division, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 12th day of April 2022. A proclamation to designate April 2022 as Community Appreciation Month. Whereas the School Board of Stafford County strives to maintain positive public and community relations by working with local businesses, agencies, community members, faith institutions, and organizations to create partnerships, and whereas the support to students, staff, and families from our community has strengthened the school division's ability to prepare students for success in their education, work, and citizenship, and whereas the School Board recognizes the businesses and organizations in the community which promote the common goal of improving educational opportunities for students through educational partnership and sponsorship with the division, and whereas the School Board is grateful and appreciative for the significant contribution to division programs and initiatives which enhance the education of students, and whereas the community routinely engages in the ongoing processes of education through advocacy, volunteerism, and philanthropy to support our students, staff, and families, and whereas the School Board desires to formally acknowledge the community for supporting their schools, students, families, and communities, now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates April 2022 as Community Appreciation Month, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 12th day of April 2022. A proclamation to recognize April 2022 as School Library Month. Whereas school library programs ensure that students and staff are effective users of information, and whereas school librarians provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school, and whereas the School Board of Stafford County entrusts school librarians to teach the skills of locating and using information and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading in every student, and whereas school library programs contribute to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education, and whereas the school librarians of Stafford County Public Schools work to build quality library programs for all students, now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates April 2022 as School Library Month throughout the school division. The School Board calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Stafford County to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in celebration of School Library Month, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 12th day of April 2022. I'd like to move on to awards now. The superintendent would like to recognize individuals each month who have contributed significantly to the goodwill and advancement of positive culture among their school, department, and our community. We are honored tonight to recognize two procurement employees who earned state recognition in Ms. Anna Marie Bellino for her coordination of the 46th Annual Fine and Performing Arts Festival. Jennifer and Wendy, will you join us? On March 22nd, 2022, Jennifer Stephenhofer, our Director of Procurement, received the 2022 Virginia Association of Governmental Procurements Distinguished Service Award. Over the past year, Jennifer's distinguished service to VAGP has resulted in state and national recognition that shed a positive light on the procurement profession. Dr. Taylor, along with the VAGP, are honored to recognize her for her noteworthy contributions to both education and professional development and her devotion to mentoring many other procurement professionals in Virginia. Jennifer has a history of making an impact through her work. She is the past recipient of VAGP's Manager of the Year Award, as well as NIGP's Professional Manager of the Year Award. We're incredibly proud of the dedication that Jennifer continues to show Stafford County Public Schools. Procurement Analyst Wendy Cole received the 2022 Virginia Association of Governmental Procurements Buyer of the Year Award. Wendy's significant contributions to the advancement of the purchasing profession and professional development were key factors in her selection. Wendy is VAGP's Zone Four Ambassador, and she serves as an avenue to enhance communication, networking, and information about VAGP to its members throughout Zone Four, which includes Stafford, Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, King George, Caroline, Westmoreland, Essex, Richmond County, North Cumberland, Lancaster, and King and Queen. Inspired by her commitment and dedication in this role, VAGP also selected Wendy as the VAGP's nominee for the National Institute of Government Procurements Buyer of the Year Award. We're immensely proud of the way Wendy continues to represent SCPS and the procurement profession in such a dynamic and promising way. She is a true asset to Stafford County Public Schools and deserving of this honor. NIGP will select the winner of the National Award later this year. Congratulations, ladies. As the facilitator of fine and performing arts, Ms. Anna Marie Bellino and her team coordinated the 46th Annual Fine and Performing Arts Festival. This community-wide event was held on March 26th and 27th and was a tremendous success. During the festival, more than 5,000 pieces of beautiful artwork from talented students and staff from all SCPS schools, including our early childhood and focus art students, were on display over the two-day event. Visitors were also treated to live performances from choirs, jazz bands, chamber musicians, and dramatic artists who showcased their talent and performance gifts. The opening ceremony included recognition and gifts for every arts teacher in the school division. These educators worked tirelessly with their students to create masterful works of fine and performing arts and were instrumental in making the show a huge success. Thank you, Anna Marie and team, for inspiring the community after a two-year hiatus. Your eye for details and the careful makeover of an entire school into a fine arts gallery brought tremendous delight and inspiration to the Stafford County community. Congratulations on the job well done.
That brings us to the superintendent's 100-day transition report. There's no Cliff Notes?
Oh, it didn't open. I'm sorry.
As we're transitioning activities here, I should point out that there are some giant fish in our foyer, and they are part of an art display that was from North Stafford High School, and it was a project that took over two years to complete. So, we invite our public to come to the Vandy offices to take a look at that fantastic project. And when it was in its full display, it just about took up one whole part of the cafeteria. It was pretty exceptional, and just to have a piece of that in the office is fantastic. Board members, I'm delighted to be here to report on my entry plan. As you may recall, I can't say it was 100 days ago, per se, but several months ago, I came to this board and I presented this document, which was an entry plan on how I would spend my first 100 days in Stafford County Public Schools, learning about our fantastic school system, to create some actionable steps as to how we would move forward as a school system. And so, we began that presentation by talking a little bit about roles and responsibilities, and I shared this information with you, talking about how my dominant role here is to serve you as your executive and to implement the board's will, but also to preserve that which is already working and enhance those areas in need of improvement. I see myself as the cheerleader for Stafford County Public Schools and have enjoyed visiting many parts of our community, meeting many of our citizens, as well as students, staff, and of course, working closely with you to accomplish some pretty substantial things early on in our time together. My goal is to set some pretty high expectations and to create a safe and welcoming environment that supports our teachers and students in meeting those high expectations. And so, with that, I also shared this image, which I'm very fond of, which is... I'm not a rower by any stretch, and... but I take a lot of joy in looking at this and seeing a lot of people. And if you count them, there are seven rowers, not dissimilar to this seven-member board, and they are pulling together. And what I have been told about rowing is that when everyone is pulling together, they are, quote, "in the swing." And I hope, as we move forward, we continue to be in the swing as we find great solutions for Stafford County Public Schools. And I continue to be very proud of the things that we've accomplished in the short time that we've been together, but I look forward to a very bright future together. I also shared with this board my values. And I can readily admit, as I'm sure some of my family are probably watching from home, that this is a very dated picture of our family several years ago. This was definitely pre-pandemic. And... but it is an important part of who I am. And my family and I look forward to being an integral part of this community in every... in every way. Community is a really important concept to me, and it's something I value greatly because it is our family extended. We want our children to grow up to be the neighbors that we want to have next door. And that is a part of being in a good community. And it's a part of this school system's vision for the future. Integrity is incredibly important to me. Integrity in the things that we do and the things that we say and making sure that those two things line up. I think that the number-one leadership trait that any leader should have is to have empathy for others and to make decisions through an empathetic lens. And we are absolutely in the business of growth and continuous improvement. So when I think about the things that I value as an individual and as a professional, these are the things that line up most for me and help guide my decision-making and the suggestions I bring to the board. I am so delighted that this afternoon, we had the opportunity to talk about student academic performance, student behavior, student social, emotional well-being. It was very exciting because it was about keeping the main thing the main thing. And that really is about the work that we are getting ready to kick off with our strategic plan. And though that's a slightly separate presentation, and this is a great segue into that conversation, it is an important reminder for us to make sure that we do keep the main thing the main thing. So with that, I created some guiding principles as to how I would go about my work as a new superintendent in Stafford County and how this would guide my work moving forward. Some of these are quite obvious. I'm not going to read them to you. They are in my new detailed book report that I've created for you, my summary report that follows up this other report. But I think it's important to be very transparent for the public so that you all know what I'm thinking and the observations that I was able to collect. So let's get right on with it. I think that as I began this journey, I very much did not want to jump right into the fray and have to make a ton of decisions. Well, good luck, because that's not how it played out, obviously. But I definitely tried to go about this work from... really from December 1st moving on to look at our work through this lens of trying to understand before I asked people to understand me. And there were a lot of things that I think I could have chimed in on sooner that I'm glad I didn't because I took the time to listen and to learn more about Stafford County, more about our processes and people, our absolutely exceptional staff who care for children at all levels, and how deeply our parents and community do value its school system. It was very important that I did not pass this step before jumping into the decision-making role. So I broke up my first 100 days into three very overlapping stages, and I don't know why it renumbered them weirdly on the screen, but they were actually numbered differently on the PDF, at least I hope they were. That's right. They're exactly... they're overlapping. So... and that was really to engage with everybody and meet everybody, to evaluate our performance and how we've been, and we got a little taste of that tonight, and to embolden the action by empowering people to act on behalf of the school system. You know, we asked some pretty tough questions of people. We asked them, what are the things that we should stop doing? What are the things that we should start doing? And what are the things that are really good that we should continue to do? We asked how we might create better access and opportunities and outcomes for kids in Stafford County. And these are not easily answered questions. But we went about this work in a very deliberate way, and we did this together. There were many town halls, many listen learns, where this board and I got to spend some time with some of our community to learn a lot from our staff and from our parents and from community. And I think definitely that last number one, empower, I don't think anyone can say that we didn't empower others to start acting on behalf of the school system. The voice has been pretty clear, and I'm very proud of that. So, I want to just recap very briefly some of the things that we did. When I say I got to meet everyone, I wish I had... I physically got to meet everyone. This is a very large community. But I got to meet an exceptional sample of our community, and I continue to meet more. I hosted different sessions throughout our community at different times and in different locations, in different corners, in public places, in public schools, in restaurants and businesses, as well as community areas. We hosted town hall meetings, and I visited every school many, multiple, multiple times. I've had a chance to meet with our departments and have even met with some of our support organizations and civic groups. That has provided a lot of pretty fantastic context to some of the decisions that we aim to make and definitely lay a foundation for some of my thinking going into our strategic plan. And I've learned a lot. The number-one key takeaway is that we have outstanding people serving this school system and this community. Stafford County absolutely loves its school systems and its individual schools, its teachers, its students, its principals. We have high expectations for success. And of late, we haven't exactly met those high expectations, and that's okay, because we're going to improve and get better. The community definitely wants greater clarity around decision-making. And they also want a seat at the table and a voice in some of that decision-making. I think we saw that loud and clear and heard that loud and clear and continue to hear that from our constituents, and that's a very positive thing. There are many concerns surrounding how we manage our growth, and that is a consistent theme that we are going to continue to see and continue to have to deal with for several years. Access to adequate resources also continues to be a challenge that we are faced with on a regular basis and as we come out of a pandemic setting for school, addressing some of our performance gaps. To evaluate our school system, I did a lot of reading and research and had to rely on a lot of fantastic folks in this community to provide context to some of that reading and research. Diving into our budget, there's a longstanding adage that I can tell you where your priorities are based on where your budget is spent, and that is definitely the case. And our budget is spent on children and focused on classroom teachers, and that is really important and a trend we should continue. But there are also some holes that we need to address in terms of maintaining our physical plant and maintaining a strategy towards addressing some of those growth needs. We identified a lot of areas that we could improve, but we also identified a lot of strengths. And I think that that is noteworthy at every corner, that this is a community that is very proud of its school system but also recognizes that there's room for improvement. One of the areas that hasn't gotten a whole lot of attention of late but is starting to gain some momentum and was something that this board tried to tackle over the past year, which is student and staff wellness. Looking at that through a lens of school climate is also a data point that we are trying to capture moving forward in terms of what is happening in our school buildings to make our school buildings a welcoming and safe place for children and for our staff. And that might help create an environment where we can reduce our attrition issues, which has something... has been something that has surfaced recently. Our last domain here was seeking ways that we might empower. And I got to tell you, this was a very rewarding part of this journey. And I got to tell you, this was a very rewarding part of this journey with you in the early months of my tenure in your service. One of the events that I am most proud of, that that continues to be a part of our discussions even today, was the unconference event that we hosted in both in-person and digital format. And we asked our teachers a question of how might we take some things off of your plate? Our team even met today to to polish some of our responses, and we intend on publishing those responses so that teachers may see every single comment that they made and how we responded to every single comment in terms of how we might make progress in that area. And there are so many opportunities for wins and so many ways that we can help our teachers manage their workload a little bit better, and we're very proud of that. As you can see, there's a bullet point on there to create a constituent services office. It's a good thing I'm giving this presentation now and not before the consent agenda, because now it's past tense, and I appreciate that. And I did actually have to change that from the first time this was posted. But we're we are excited about that and the opportunity to connect a little bit more deliberately with our community and help them candidly to solve some problems. That's really what this is about. Our team at Bandy in particular has enthusiastically embraced going into our schools on a regular basis. We have an honor system, but a commitment to four hours a month from every staff member. I have I have faithfully upheld my end of the bargain, although it has been tough a couple of times with the busy schedule, but it's been totally worth it. My time at Drew Middle School, which is my ambassador's school, has been great because it's allowed me an opportunity to connect with a lot of teachers on that team as well as that administrative team and learn a little bit more about Drew Middle School. And the best part is that folks that I talked to at Bandy have very similar stories about ways that they've connected with folks in the community that they otherwise normally wouldn't have a whole lot of association with and see how their work connects to theirs and vice versa. So a great opportunity. Looking ahead, I feel very positive about the trust that we are building as a group of eight with our counterparts in the Board of Supervisors and County Administration. I feel like we are making progress in in an area that needs strength in a relationship. And I I give a lot of credit to our board for making a lot of extra efforts this year to 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 help strengthen that relationship and build trust. And I think that that will ultimately be mutually beneficial for not just the school system and county administration, but also for the community writ large when we are all singing off the same sheet of music and working together to solve challenges that we are faced with. And I think that there's tremendous headway that's being made, and it is because of teamwork. And I just am so grateful for all the extra efforts that the board is making to that end in particular, because it is translating into positive outcomes in the classroom. We definitely need to take a hard look at at the things that we do in school. And that's going to be the centerpiece of our very short next presentation and the work that the board undertakes this summer going into next fall as we launch a new strategic plan. Assessments is just one element of that and a great example of how we might look to reduce the number of standardized-based assessments that are in our schools. There's an old adage that I'm very fond of that that is sheep don't get fatter by weighing them more often. I will say that we are better off just finding a better scale. And I think that we can do that, and I think that we have the tools at our disposal, and it doesn't need to cost us a ton either to do that. So with that, we have done a lot. We have learned a lot, and I think that these last few summary points kind of detail how important our community voice is and how we have leveraged that community voice to make good things happen in Stafford County. So with that, I am tremendously grateful for the opportunity to serve you. I have told my teams many times that they do not need to be the best. However, we do need to be the best at getting better, and that every day presents a new opportunity to get just a little bit better than the day before. And to me, this is an important notion that if we are committed to continuous improvement, in no time at all, we will be the absolutely best school system in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So with that, how do I shake off the title "new superintendent"? Well, I think that that I've definitely had some moments where I have been tested and 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 battle-tested enough to to shake off the new title and just be the superintendent or just be your superintendent. And I think that there's a few things that I can do moving forward to to earn that earn that that position. So to that point, we will continue with our listen and learn activities every month. That is something that our community in pieces enjoys being a part of. And sometimes it's about an issue, sometimes it's about making a connection, but people do look forward to those events, and we will continue to leave that door open for folks. I think that this is an important part of how I learn more about Stafford County, and and you have my commitment that I will continue to learn more about Stafford County and respect the culture of this place. You know, I think it's important to to absolutely stay who I am as a person. And two words that I I hope that you have quickly identified with me is that I'm very collaborative and that I hold myself accountable and I hold my teams accountable. I think that that's really important in the work that we're going to do moving forward because it's not going to be easy. And there will be bumps in the road. And as we reach those bumps in the road, the question isn't whether or not we're going to have a bump in the road, but how will we get over that bump in the road? And I think it's going to be working together and being very transparent about the actions that we take moving forward. I think you can count on me to advocate vigorously, not just for our students, but also for our staff and our parents and the community, and of course, you as the board. I think you have known me to be honest, very transparent, maybe overly communicative at moments, or at least communicate frequently and thoroughly and openly. And I think that that is something that I value in our relationship, that no one in this room hesitates to pick up the phone to call one another when something is going on, and I think that that's a quick way to to help solve some problems. I think that that we've laid some really positive groundwork in involving the community in assessing our challenges, but also working towards solving some of those challenges. And I think that there's an army of folks who want to stay engaged with their children's education, an army of kids who want to be engaged in this decision-making process, and teachers and staff members who love to be a part of the action and decision-making. And it's up to us whether or not we leverage that, and I think we have the the footprints to do that. But at the end of the day, it's how we lay the groundwork for a positive culture that supports innovation and continuous improvement. And I think we're there. So with that, I just want to say thank you. I have absolutely enjoyed every single minute with our adorable children that are just fantastic, even our bigger kids who are also adorable, but in a very different way, who are very insightful and bring a lot to the table. They are taught by expert teachers and supported by phenomenal leaders, and this is a very special place, and I am thankful every day and just grateful for the opportunity to to serve and to continue to serve. So thank you. And I'll take any questions if the board has them at this time.
I don't have questions, but just not just being new to the school board, but really getting involved in like all of the the tiny things. I I absolutely thank you and commend the patience, the honesty, the calming effect that it's had when the questions have been, you know, you know, what about, and you know, I come in like this, and you're like, stop, settle down. So I think that it should be noted that behind the scenes, it's 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 very comforting to a new board member who's learning the the how all this stuff sort of interfaces with each other and how one thing leads to another to have such a competent leader at the helm. That also is, you know, like, let's face it, we all just met each other in whatever, January, but is is confident enough to say, you need to calm down, because that's what I would want. That's what I need also, so that I can say, okay, I've had my passionate historical moment. I'm calm, now what? Because now I'm ready to listen to him instead of staying passionate. So I just wanted to thank you for that. It's it's been a huge growth builder for me. It's allowed me to kind of not go down a wormhole or a rabbit hole and stay up here and kind of focus on the thing. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
And thank you. We've turned into a great team, and we we started off by meeting together and doing a retreat, and that was a great opportunity for us to to get to know each other and our different styles, our different directions on the Compass Rose, and and to learn a lot from each other, and I thank you for that.
Any other questions coming? I I just want to say, as an old timer, I I don't recall any four-month period having so many crises and challenges and just oddities. So I appreciate your survival instincts and and your leadership. You've really helped us get through, and 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 I think really helped us all as a board, you know, grow to be a good working team. But it certainly, hopefully, will quiet down, so.
I would like to say something nice as well. I just appreciate your calming demeanor. I think that's what Alyssa was speaking about. Obviously, you don't say the same things to everybody, but and that's okay. That's that's totally okay. No, that is totally nice. Because he calms me down, too, you know, because I get pissed, you know, I'm like, okay. But I like how excited you get about about new things that you're bringing to Stafford. I love how excited you got about one of the people. Well, you've gotten excited about everyone you've hired, not that you've hired a lot, but you get super pumped for the people who you hire, which I always thought like, that's awesome that someone is so excited for somebody else. I usually don't see that in people, so I like that, and I definitely enjoy the presence that you give us as well. Thank you.
Yes. I get to I get to talk about the presence next. Yeah. Well, that, too.
Okay, anything else? I feel like we're on that show that, you know, is, are you going to sing for us?
Not today. And 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 thank you for the for the love fest for sure. It is appreciated, but we've we've got business to do. And I will say this, I I've been promising this to you since we met, that we would get to the good stuff and that we would get over some of the hurdles and some of the challenges. But we had to go through the rain to get to the sunshine, and here we are. We get to talk about everybody's favorite topic, which is our future. And, you know, not to sound cliche, but definitely our children are our future. They are the future of our our entire county, country, state, everything. But how we address the needs of our future and our school system in particular and the the course that we set for the future. So a big question comes about is why are we even doing a strategic plan? And why why do we even go through this process? And I will say that I've had a lot of super engaging and exciting conversations with people, and then I get to see eyes glaze over the second I mention one of two things, budget or strategic plan, and then that's it. People are lost. Well, the good news is is that the strategic plan is way more exciting than a lot of the things that we do, because it is about the direction and the vision for our school system and where we are going and what we hope to accomplish. But it's actually more than that, too. It's a representative view of not just what we are or what what we're trying to do and where we're trying to go and how we're trying to get there, but also who we are as an organization. And that's so, so compelling, because we have a great story to tell, and we are doing great things, but there's also other things that we could be doing as well. The board is coming to a conclusion with its existing strategic plan this summer. And it is time, as that five-year strategic plan expires, to adopt a new direction and a new plan. So I'm excited to be a part of that journey with you. This will likely be the last strategic plan presentation that I give, because we have project managers who will come up and talk to you about how we're collecting some of this information and some of this data and report those findings back to you as we give you drafts of what some of this might look like moving forward. The first big question that we have to ask is, who are we as a division? And a much broader way to ask this might be, who are we as a community? However you define that, whether that be Stafford County or Stafford County Public Schools, Mrs. Jones math class in room 212? Who are we as a community and who are we as a part of Stafford County Public Schools? And an important litmus test of this and how we can tell that we've done a good job with this is that everyone who participates in this process and gives voice to this can see themselves in the final output. And that's a that's a good litmus test to see if we've done a good job with this. So we ask who we are, what is important to us, and importantly, in a very aspirational way, what do we want to be or where do we want to be in the future? We capture these in values, vision, and mission. Me personally, I can tell you right now that I have a bias for for using very few words to say very many. And so I would challenge many folks, if they could repeat the mission statement of their organization or school system, they probably couldn't. It's probably because they are using a ton of words, and I think a more parsimonious look at word use might help us in the future. The next big question that we ask is, where are we going and how are we going to get there? This is captured in our goals and objectives, and the question of how are we going to get there is captured in our strategies and tactics. This is probably the the hardest part in terms of nailing down very specifics in in terms of how we want to measure our success. Because the truth is, Stafford County is going to distinguish itself by doing three things. The first one is to have a plan. Well, good news, just about everybody has a plan, okay? The second thing is to have goals that are measurable. About half the people have goals that are measurable. The last one is actually following said plan. Now, this is a switch, because almost nobody does this. And it's not for ill intent, but a lot of great strategic plans ends up sitting on the shelves. There may be a leadership change, there may be a focus change, there may be a crisis, a whole host of things can happen that can change the direction of an organization. How we stay disciplined and how we stay focused is by sticking to a plan and amending it as we need to, but actually taking the time to amend it if we need to. So here's our process. It's very vigorous. Because the board has a strategic plan that is expiring this summer, we are going to be moving at a clip. As a matter of fact, our first kickoff events begin tomorrow, where we will be having focus groups, a survey for our stakeholders, feedback opportunities en masse, all with the goal of identifying our values, vision, and mission. We will then, in the early summer months, identify some goals and objectives, identify some action teams to start piloting some of that work in terms of directing where that work is going and what strategies we might adopt and tactics we might use to achieve those goals. And then we get into August and September, where we're going to finalize all of this, and it is done. So our goal, and I should back up a little bit if I can, nope, I'll stick with it. Our goal is to bring this to you in chapters, where we will bring completed components of this in stages for finalization. We'll come back to you in June, where we'll present to you draft, values, vision, mission, and a first look at some goals and objectives, solicit some board feedback, and then bring back to you some more information later in the summer with a finalized version of a lot of this work. Some of the events that we have planned next week, April 21st at 6:00 PM, will be at North Stafford High School, where we'll have a community engagement event. And then we have several other engagement events that are open to the public as well as, and these can be community members, they don't have to be parents, they can be really anybody in the Stafford community. We're going to push this out pretty broadly, because this is everybody's school system, not just parents, students, and teachers. It is everybody's school system, and we want to hear pretty wide voice. We are talking with our faith leaders, we are talking with our community advisory group, our parent advisory groups, student groups, staff advisory groups, departments, and of course, your advisory groups in this process, all to gain some stakeholder input on this this critical early phase. We will be collecting a ton of data and distilling that data for you into those buckets of values, vision, mission. vision, mission, goals, and objectives, and then appointing some subject matter experts to help guide some of those work based on the goals that the board chooses to adopt. So I have a present for you and yes, this is one of the many little fun things that we get to do, and that is a book study. And I have several books for you that are bundled up and we can thank Angie Mergo who did the bundling and the ordering and everything else. And I want to talk to you a little bit about some of these books. There are actually four that I'm hoping that we can get through together and just so happens that we've got four months until there's a final draft that's due to you, so maybe we can tackle one of these per month. None of these are, of course, required, but we are excited to have this offering with you. Folks on my leadership team will also be reading these books as well, but in a little bit of a different order. And these books should provide some insight into how we might think a little bit differently about our school system and some of the goals that we hope to accomplish. I think you'll find that Outliers by Malcolm Gladwell to be a very insightful look at how students learn and how humans develop and how we become experts in our individual fields. Tony Wagner and Ted Dinterschmidt is a companion text. It's actually a prequel to a book that our leadership team read last year and that was actually assigned by Dr. Kizner and this is Most Likely to Succeed. And this is a book about, and I know it gives it away in the title, about probabilistically thinking about our students and their success and how we might craft programs and supports to help our students be most likely to succeed. Good to Great is an oldie but a goodie. It's a favorite of mine by Jim Collins and it is a business text that looks at very different organizations and how they move the needle from being good organizations to being absolutely exponentially awesome organizations. And it definitely takes a case study approach and there are pretty outstanding takeaways from that text, which I think you'll find tremendous value in. The last text for our book study is a book called Outsiders and it's a study of eight CEOs in the 1970s and 80s. It's done by Harvard Business Review. The author is William Thorndike and he examines how certain individual leaders and boards achieved exponential returns relative to everyone else in the world. And there'll be no surprises in there, there's a common thread and some correlation between some of the success that many of the folks highlighted in that book had achieved and it's well worth a look. Now, there is an extra credit book. And I'll admit, this one's a little tough. It is a statistics book, but I think that you all will find it super engaging. I think you know that I'm a bit of a math nerd and that's fine, but I think that this will be, the juice is worth the squeeze, let me just put it that way. And it gives a very insightful view into everything from the housing market to collapse to how we might predict earthquakes to how weather predictions come to play, but it is a book about how we might make better forecasts and better predictions and why some predictions are successful and other predictions are not successful and how we might become just better stewards of data altogether. I think you might find it fascinating. So good news, you are not the only ones that get to go on this journey as well. As I mentioned, my leadership team will be on this journey, but our public library system is also setting up displays in Stafford County Public Libraries with these books and inviting our public to participate in this journey with us. So this journey of learning will be with our community and is definitely a part of that empower quadrant of our discussion in my entry plan and very much a part of the discussions I hope that we get to have as we formulate our new strategic plan. So with that, I'm going to close just by talking a little bit about some next steps and what we can expect. Our official kickoff of our strategic plan, it's happening right now. We're doing it. Very excited about this. We have our first engagement event with the community on the 21st. Again, that was at North Stafford High School. We'll be doing several stakeholder feedback events throughout April and May as well as having a survey component that'll go out. It'll be very brief, very painless, but it will also be very meaningful to us and the information that we collect. We will do a little strategic planning session, very similar to some of the focus group work that we've done with other folks. We will do that with the board at a May board meeting and then present on May 24th the values, vision, and mission draft, as well as maybe a sketch of some of our goals and objectives. It'd be a great opportunity for us to clear that hurdle as we go into the next layer of the work. And then by July 12th, we should have our, the vision portion finalized and our objectives pretty well inked out. And then the early part of the fall, late summer, we can flesh out our strategies and tactics. So we'll be delivering the strategic plan to you in chapters, but this is an important part of the process because it's kind of like you have to do the first part to inform the second part and the second part to inform the third part. So it is actually good that we approve these things in chapters and if we need to go back and make slight tweaks and modifications, we can certainly do that, too. So I will pause right now and entertain any questions that the board may have, but we are very excited to start this work and to start this journey and very excited about your summer reading project.
Any questions? Ms. Guy?
So is this like a book club?
It is now.
Because I'm super excited. I've actually started Outliers already.
Oh, very good.
Because my husband told me two, five years ago and I haven't finished, but I will come to the meetings for the book club, too.
We can do a book club?
All right, thank you.
I think we need book buddies.
You know, it just so happens that there's seven of you and one of me, that's eight. I think there's room for book buddies.
All right. Any other questions? No, well, we'll look forward. Thanks for the launch.
I have one. What is, where is the second community engagement event? The first one is North Stafford. The second one, I couldn't see who it was in the picture.
Stafford High School at the Porter Library.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. It's actually in my notes up there.
Oh, that's funny.
Yep.
Okay. That's the Porter Library?
Correct.
On the last one?
Yep.
That's funny. That looked like that little sketch they did for High School Six. I was like, oh, High School Six is going to be built by May 10.
Nine AM?
Yeah, it's a grand opening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll have a lot to look forward to this summer. That brings us to citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Individuals desiring to submit their comments in writing rather than in person may do so using the public comment form at www.staffordschools.net/digitalpubliccomment. There is a 2,500-character maximum on the form, which is equivalent to approximately three minutes of speaking time. The deadline to submit the public comment form for this meeting was 2:00 PM this afternoon. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or divisions' programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113 Public Complaints. Ms. Hall will read the names. We have two people that signed up for citizen comments. She'll read those two and if they can come forward, if there's anyone else who wishes to address the board in public comment, please line up on the sides of the room and if there's nobody lined up after the first two, we will close the public comment period.
All right. The first speaker will be Shannon Fingerholtz, followed by Taylor Cardwell.
I'm not going to pass out today. Yay!
My name's Shannon Fingerholtz and first of all, I want to thank all of you guys for being super patient with me, giving me advice and encouraging me to continue to come back because I was insanely nervous and it's getting better. And now I'm targeting the Board of Supervisors and reducing my anxiety with them as well. So, thank you. I still want to request this, I requested it before, if we could have time at the beginning for the students to speak. Days like this, it's not that big of a deal, but when there's a massive amount of people in here, these kids need to go home and they've got homework and we just went through the whole thing about how much after-school stuff they've got. So if they're taking the time to actually be a representative for themselves and their fellow students, then we should kind of meet them in the middle and have some time at the beginning for them. Also, the new voting system, so it leaves out a part of our community that we might have not thought about, our visually impaired community. When you put in that vote, when it's unanimous, it's not as much of a concern, but when there's a division between yays and nays, they can't tell who is voting yea or nay. So maybe not doing a whole poll of the board, whoops, sorry, but maybe even just calling out, these are the nays and running down and these are the yays, that might be a consideration. I know you're trying to save time and I appreciate that, but we don't want to leave out that segment of the community and the Board of Supervisors will also get the same suggestion. And then the last thing is, in the work session, there was a big concern about self-efficacy, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And I just want to let the teachers and administrators and you guys know that it's going to be an uphill battle and not necessarily because the teachers or administrators have done anything. The community has lost confidence and the children see the parents complaining and not supporting and children interpret that in different ways and we all know they like to internalize things. So the children may be absorbing that from some of their parents. So hopefully, as we continue to do the community engagements that Dr. Taylor's willing to do and the focus groups and things like that, hopefully that community faith will build back up and then the kids will follow through as well. So, and again, thank you guys for working so hard. You guys do a lot more than people realize, so thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. My name is Taylor Cardwell and I've had the privilege of serving as the band director at Rodney Thompson Middle School for the past eight years. I want to be very clear that I love my job, my students, my community, my colleagues. That being said, I was incredibly disheartened that the school board selected to proceed with option three for next year's schedule. I believe that if you asked Stafford County teachers what change they would like to see in our school system, they would respond by asking for higher salaries and they would like to feel more valued. A scheduling survey was conducted polling parents, students, and staff. Seventy-eight percent of parents at all grade levels declared a preference for the middle schools, keeping the second time slot. Seventy-five percent of staff at all levels declared a preference for the middle schools, keeping the second time slot as well. The survey results were overwhelming and clear, yet the school board chose to ignore the data. Conducting a survey and then choosing to ignore our input makes us feel undervalued as educators. Dr. Taylor was very clear that option three was also the least effective use of our transportation fleet. We made the news last August due to our transportation struggles and it confuses me that we would select an even more challenging route in the future that is also going to cost us additional money. This new scheduling option will also put an additional strain on the after-school programs that we can offer at our middle schools. We conducted a survey at Thompson to see how the proposed bell schedule would affect our after-school programs. After-school programs at our middle school currently include musical rehearsals, tutoring, both for classes and SOLs, homework club, a wide variety of sports, sea perch, honor societies, musicals, plays, other clubs, and many more. We have a very diverse after-school program. Of our survey respondents, fifty-five percent of our staff sponsors stated they would not be willing to sponsor their current after-school obligations next year if the proposed bell schedule remains. An additional thirty-seven percent of sponsors indicated they are currently unsure if they would continue to sponsor their after-school programs and only eight percent indicated that they would plan to sponsor next year. If the high school schedule was adjusted to cater to their after-school programs, I question why the middle school programs would be jeopardized. They are just as valid and warrant your consideration when making these important decisions. I want to be very clear, I love my job. I enjoy making music with my students each day and watching them grow, but I have been pretty frustrated with the way that the school board has handled this decision-making process and I would hope to encourage you to seek a different solution if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one waiting to come forward and speak, so we will close the citizen comment period, come to the board for board committee reports. Is there any committee reports? Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Governance Committee met on the 5th of April. We've wrapped up the discussions on Policy 1108, which will be future meetings of the board. In addition to Policy 1108, the remaining 1,100 policies will be brought to the board meeting on 4/26 for information. And in addition to that, we also will have to adjust the charter and bylaws of the Governance Committee for Policy 1113, but that will be, like I said, brought on the 26th. Policy 1110 was discussed with some recommendations and revisions that will be brought back to the board on 5, to the committee on the 4th of May and added for information to the school board meeting on 5/10 with accompanying regulations for your review. In addition to adding advisory committees, it was suggested that we should establish a calendar that better aligns with the committee's purpose so presentations can be given to accommodate budget considerations or events that are associated with those committees like student health, their presentation given during Student Health Month, or the Fine Arts presentation in coordination with the Fine Arts Exhibition. Another recommendation was instead of having all advisory committees meet every year, with the exception of our required committees, that the board make recommendations at their organizational meetings and establish goals for these committees, since we found that these things are more effective in how they are tasked to do their job. It was also recommended that we begin taking applications for these committees at the start of the school year and recommend people for one- or two-year terms so that we are always maintaining a pool of experienced people on these committees. The committee approved the Frequently Asked Questions document and there are two policies that will be reviewed tonight. One of them is, in addition to accidents and emergency medical treatments, putting naloxacone administration into the policy in accordance with Virginia law. And also, the policy on pupil transportation, 7201, has been completely revised as a result of our ad hoc transportation committee and we appreciate the effort that they put into that. As mentioned earlier, there will be a work session for the strategic plan on 5/10 and we have a work session scheduled for 6/13, which we will need to establish a time for. This is to go over the superintendent's evaluation and we'll be posting a document online for the school board members to start to kind of get a feel for that evaluation and the evaluation will be done in closed session on the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Are there any other board committee reports? No? All right, that brings us to board member comments. Ms. Sigman, would you like to start us off?
To start with, I just wanted to say I've been meeting with the Gifted Advisory Committee. I know that there are students out there waiting for word from the Summer Residential Governor's School. Those results should go out imminently, as early as this week, as well as the Frederickburg Regional Governor's School acceptance letter for the summer program will come towards the end of the month, after the 28th of April. I've also been asked to share that Rising Sixth Grade Parent Information Night will be Stafford Middle School on the 21st from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Of course, you should be getting some more formal invitation from your, through your student and through your gifted resource teacher, but I hope every parent goes. I found the meeting quite informative. I've been enjoying visiting the schools in my district and some of the other schools in our division as well. It has been tremendously busy and so much fun to get to meet everybody and see everybody back in school and enjoying all the fun things that schools bring. I also wanted to share a book that I left on my counter, but I have a picture of it. This is a young man from my home state of New Jersey. His name is Timothy Rohr. I've known his family for a long time and he is a young adult with autism who, in graduating from his high school and transitioning to professional life, had a hard time kind of socially adjusting and being included. So he wrote a pamphlet about how to be inclusive in your friendships for students with autism or children with autism. And that has grown into a children's book. And I got a copy for myself and I really enjoyed it and I've purchased several copies that I do intend to bring with me when I visit schools, but I, especially in light of it being Autism Acceptance Month, I did want to share the resource. I did want to share the resources that this young man has put together. He's all over our state doing professional development, um, meeting with legislators, uh, about how to be more inclusive and I look forward to sharing the book as I visit schools, um, moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. Dr. Warner?
I'm, got nothing tonight. I'm gonna just pass.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so, um, I wanted to say the CGS Governing Board met and, uh, wanted to announce that all the positions for ninth grade governor's school were filled and I have not seen that in a while, so, um, all ninety slots got, um, accepted. Um, I, I don't know, nose goes, I got elected vice chair, so I, I, I did that a couple of years ago. Um, and then, uh, CGS had, uh, additional funds because they were not able to carry out as many field trips as a result of COVID. And so they ended up with about two-hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, we voted to approve that being used to purchase science equipment, so that all five sites would have, um, a similar, uh, set of science equipment. So that should be, uh, arriving in schools before, before, um, school starts. And then I wanted to thank Ms. Joseph at Brookpoint. She was teaching sociology and she invited, uh, me, I think also invited other board members, uh, to come visit her class and it was really lovely to have a chance to talk to a bunch of high schoolers and, and hear their concerns. I gather we need new desks at, at Brookpoint. I, I did say that if I had to choose between desks or teachers, I was probably gonna choose teachers. Um, but we did have a little chat about that. Um, and then I wanted to give a shout out to, uh, Stafford High School and their Skills USA folks and I had seen in the, the weekly memo that, uh, Mr. Bobby Jett had received a, a state award and he is an amazing, amazing teacher and I was thrilled to see how well, uh, our students had done in the, at the state level in additive manufacturing, because that only started maybe about four or five years ago. I think my son was one of the first ones to, to go work on that. So that was exciting to see. And then just piggybacking off what Ms. Sigmund said, uh, about autism and as students leave high school, um, just point out that our Parent Resource Center has some great information to help parents of children who may need additional help when they finish up in high school. It's never too early to reach out to the Parent Resource Center and get some of that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Holstead?
So I also am finally getting around to just visiting my schools and seeing them in action and I feel like the most exciting thing was to get to finally see our elementary school in all of its wonderful glory. Special thanks to, um, Mr. Ruska and Alyssa, who, as it turns out, spells her name only one, one letter differently than mine, but also wears her glasses on her head and we're mirroring each other unknowingly in the meeting, which was funny. But, um, you know, I, so some of my comments there are just, you know, I've gotten out just to see, uh, Mountain View, I, I really want to get around, but my schedule's a little bit tighter, but I, we keep talking about community and the value and importance of that and I think it's so important to just talk about the fact that it is real for everyone that sees it. So I, I have a few comments on it and your, um, report really spoke to me as well, because, um, and to the comments earlier, uh, you know, I feel like we, I mean, there are definitely still some difficult topics we have to get to the heart of as a board, because there are some really big issues going on within internally to our schools. And I think a lot of that is because, is my mic not on? I'm sorry.
I think a lot of that is because, um, externally, we're not getting the community that we have. There's a lot of, there's been a lot of fighting and a lot of dissension and a lot of divisiveness over the last two years or three years and, you know, hey, we're, we're adults, but let's just face it, we're not always, um, nice adults. Um, so I don't, I would like to see us. I mean, when I hear things like community and building community and bringing us back together, I, I want to see the Hands Across America approach to rebuilding this, because that, they're not wrong. The, the community isn't, I mean, it's there, like, to see the teachers and the kids and to watch. And I went to Brookpoint too and the only thing I said I would advocate for is left-handed desks, because there are not enough left-handed desks in the school system, I'm just saying right now. Um, but, but the fact of the matter is that you can't deny it when you go in and you see the way these teachers are with the kids and even when you come into the classroom, they're just so welcoming and so happy. But there's issues outside of that and it starts with us. I don't know if we need to all, and I, you know, hey, I'm outside of the board, I'm guilty too of being, you know, cranky sometimes.
No.
Um, but, but to me, I, I feel so empowered, to use your word, by the fact that we recognize that. We recognize that our community is, you know, I feel like we're hurt, we're healing, and then we're hurt, but we're healing. So we might be taken two steps forward, one back every now and again, but I, I just encourage us all as we move forward. We've had a lot of participation from the community. I mean, to the extent possible, please, please, please stay involved. No matter how passionate you are, no matter whether you agree with us or not, because tha- that fuels us all getting together to heal these hurts that we've had over the last few years. Um, and so to speak to just two things that was in Thomas's report, which is the, um, the bump in the road. They're coming. Now, he said I would have to go six months before I got some reprieve, less. But I think now the warning is, in another three, you'll get more. But anyway, I, I really feel like before we hit that bump in the road, the activities that we all engage in together have to be community-building activities and I can't wait to participate more in those. Um, and the other thing is looking at some of the data that was shared earlier and the academic performance of our kids and how we're doing. I mean, uh, you know, when I look at it, it's completely, it's a daunting, the load of what some of those numbers mean is very daunting to me, right? Like, the task is so enormous. So it's important for me, not just as a school board member, but as a mom, to remind myself that it's not insurmountable. And so I, I encourage us all to remember it's not insurmountable. Um, and I will tell you that I could visit my schools every single solitary day. I feel like, I just shouldn't be like, I feel like it's insurmountable again, so I came here to feel better. Um, so let's just bear that in mind as we're starting to get along again. The two things I will say is I'm going to be holding some, um, Hartwood Outreach for the redistrict deferral. Um, so I'll be, um, Sandra's helping me develop a couple of town halls so that we can come together as a, as a district, really, to look at what we can do and how we can move things forward. So when you see those come out, please, please, please tell your friends and neighbors and families and whatever, just to come and show up. Um, there'll be at least two of them. One will be with me and the other will be with me and Mr. English, who has agreed to come and support the effort to not have to redistrict the kids, but to really hear and see what's going on and hopefully we can utilize that to push the building of the elementary school back, because, man, you can tell those kids are all in at that school. And I just want to see them be able to stay and to have that community stay in place. So when you see it come out, when it's launched officially, spread the word far and wide and then, we're not having snacks, are we? M&amp;M's, maybe?
We do have snacks.
We can have that, okay. Maybe we'll have snacks and then that will bring more people. Um, but yeah, it's gonna move fast and furious and I know with summer coming up, it's gonna be weird, because people are gonna be going vacations and doing things, but, um, I promise I'd have a, somewhat of a solution in a short period of time, so I'm gonna work really hard to get that done. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Guy?
I, I too am going to be having town halls and I was not aware that snacks were a thing there, but now I know. I'm, I will be looking toward someone here to bring my people some snacks. Um, I won't have an agenda-
We're gonna need cleanup too, if we have snacks.
Okay.
Never mind.
Figure that out. Um, so, my town hall is really just gonna be to listen. I won't have an agenda. I don't have anything coming up for just the acquired district, but, um, I just need to listen and hear more, so that, that'll be what that's about. Um, I also went to Brookpoint and met with those amazing children and I just wanted to reiterate that they do need new desks at Brookpoint. Dr. Taylor?
They did like you best.
They, they like me best?
That's what they said, yeah.
They're so honest. You know, this new generation of individuals, it's, it's what's gonna put us over the top. Um, also, uh, I just thought it was really cool that Shakira Austin from Colonial Forge was the third draft pick for the WNBA Mystics, which I just, I don't know, I thought that was awesome and I can't wait to go see her play. Uh, I've, I've never been to a WNBA game, so this is gonna be my first one because of her. And, yeah, I feel tr- and I also wanted to, um, I wanted to mention, uh, something that Dr. Warner said that was, I think, really important, because I used to be the parent who was on the advisory committee. That's how I, like, the first thing I ever did for the schools and then I quit, because I felt like the board wasn't listening. That was many years ago and I gotta be honest, I just assumed it stayed that way. I've heard people say, say, you know, that that's how it is, but listening to you guys, I learned, no, it's not like that. And so, uh, Ms. Warner said that our policy on public transportation was completely revised, completely revised due to the Transportation Advisory Committee. So, um, I, I just got on the board. I don't know what was done in the past, but this board does listen and I would ask that the community allow this board to exist on its own merits or fa- faults, but don't, um, judge us on what has been done in the past. Allow us to impress you or tell us we're getting it wrong, but I'm excited that this board is listening. Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
Okay, um, I first would like to thank Anne Marie Bellino for her efforts in directing that Fine Arts Festival. It was fantastic and what was really cool was getting to, uh, walk through the school before there were any parents and students and just admiring artwork. But more, and the digital art was new to me there, so that was really impressive to see. What was even really cool is as we were walking, we got to see all of the art teachers putting their finishing touches, to the point where they were like sticking magnets to hold the, these awesome paper backgrounds and there were clips and magnets on top of and hidden. Of course, I'm short, so I couldn't really see all the tops, but I could see, you know, these little, uh, clips of magnets at the top and at the bottom and the effort that was put on to make these displays look so professional. There was also the theater groups, there were musical groups. And next year, I cannot wait for the elementary school, um, uh, song presentations, because those are always just so much work for the teachers, but so heartwarming for the community to hear. So after we got to walk, Dr. Taylor and I got to walk around and see all the artwork, we also got to see the kids come with their family and parents holding them up so they could get their headshot next to their art piece and so it was just to the collaborative effort and a monumental effort on the selection and backing photos and choosing prints and art pieces, putting these displays together. Those teachers doing the art, the music, and the drama put in so much work, but it wa- it was so worth it to see the community's faces and hear their giggles and they're bringing grandparents in. It was just huge effort to make that happen, but it was a completely enjoyable community event and I really just appreciated being able to go this year. I also got to meet, um, Jocelyn, uh, Turman from, um, Drew Middle School. She did the Thank a Teacher Art Contest from the Virginia Lottery and won for the state of Virginia in middle school. That was an impressive piece of artwork that she did. And she was so surprised. Um, Ms. Guy was there too. Um, and it was just really, really fun to see her face and, um, for her to be recognized for her incredible talent. She's the quiet one in the house, so to have a quiet child get a big award was really just fun to see. I also got to go to Ms. Joseph's class at Brookpoint, um, for Women's History Month. I really enjoyed, um, talking to her class, but I realized when, you know, they're asking us, "How did you get here?", like, where you are now. And thinking through, I was always kind of disappointed that I didn't do what I thought I wanted to do and di- and I wasn't who I always wanted to be. I always wanted to be a truck driver and my parents told me no. And then I wanted to be a cruise director and my parents told me no. And then when I said I wanted to be a teacher, I didn't get a lot of warm reception. My mom's watching, so I'm gonna be nice. But, um, uh, doing that either, but I had a really good time doing that and I did get to do that. But as for the truck driver and the cruise director job that I didn't get, I'm the cruise director of my family vacations. I was the cruise director when I took thirty-something kids to the Bahamas every year for five years. I was the cru- so I got to do that. And truck driving, I did get to drive across the country and that was the point of my being a truck driver. I have driven across the country and up and down both coasts. So I did get, and I didn't realize the connections that I made and the things that I've done with people and the things helped me get where I am, until I was talking to them. So it was kind of nice to have like an aha moment with the kids, although they didn't know that. Um, I also, um, sat after our vote, um, with, uh, Dr. Taylor at Dixon Smith for his community engagement. They're not easy when you don't, when you make a vote that's hard and maybe you weren't in love with. Um, it was a matter of choosing, you know, maybe a choice that you didn't really want, but just the best you could do. And then sitting in the audience and listening to how people think about it and maybe teach them something, but also learn something as well. So I would encourage all of our community members and board members too, if you'd like, to attend these community engagements. There's no agenda. It's just listening and learning and I've just really appreciated that. I also want to say, I am so excited. I have a senior who got his first and last prom this past weekend and I've just been loving all the prom pictures of kids in, dressed up and going where they want to go and their after-prom, oh my gosh, the after-proms and thing, it's just so fun to see those events back again. Um, Fairy Farm, uh, Dr. Taylor and Mr. Cohen and I walked through Fairy Farm. As you know, or may not know, it has still two more years of renovation work. We've already been through two years and yes, part of it, our challenge with it is COVID. But, um, it's disappointing that it's taking so long to do all of these things and we understand permits and processes and things like that. But I would just also like to remind that the reason, um, some of our issues that we have with our overcrowded Conway and Falmouth coming up, um, and even Rocky Run to that extent, um, it really would have been helpful if we had taken a look at that outward projection and seen that Fairy Farm rebuild, which would have taken a heck of a lot less time than this renovation work is. And to the gain of only one classroom would have been a better use of our resources and time. And it would have been a help to a school that is in the uncomfortable position of having to do, um, a renovation. So I just encourage you, when you're talking to your supervisors, um, when they're looking at what we're sending them as a CIP, don't look at the now. Please look at our, like, growth management is what we've been talking about over and over for years and years. If you just look at the five-year map, if you don't even look at next year or this year, look at the five-year map and you will see, it speaks very clearly where we need schools and who's gonna be in trouble. So we really need our supervisors listening to this and looking at the data. It's not, um, it's from their sources, not just from our sources, but we really need a look at that data. One of the committees that we've set up, excuse me, between our board and their board is a three-on-three advisory committee. And it's something that I thought was very important when I got on the board. I wasn't selected for the first two years, but I am this year. And we all chose our committees in January, both sides. But we have asked for a meeting since February. Once everyone's gone through their choosing of committees, we've asked for a meeting since February. The last two years, they've met several times throughout the year, but during the main budget season, which the budget season for us pretty much is year-round with maybe a month off, um, they met in January and March in twenty-nineteen, I believe, and, or no, twenty- And, or no, twenty twenty, they didn't meet at all on nineteen. And they met in February and April of twenty-one. And here we are midway through April and in the charter, it says that they will meet on the first Thursday of the month. We have set dates over there in February. They said we'll do the seven-on-seven in March, we'll do the three-on-three in April. And that meeting was canceled and not by us. And now we have it pushed to May. And when you all ask us to advocate, to work with, I'm telling you, we are ready. We have our committee, we have our members ready and it's being canceled. So I'm just asking our supervisors to continue working with us and not canceling, um, so that we can do the work that our community members have voted us to do. All of us are busy, multiple committees, multiple meetings and we just, but we just want to come together to do this work because we have a very large CIP project list. We have a very willing board, um, and we really want to continue to work with our supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. And to follow up on the supervisors, I want to, um, thank Mr. Cohen, who is Ms. Randall's counterpart from the George Washington District for the amazing Student Government Day that he organized, uh, last week. Uh, he's been doing it, what did he say, fourteen years? It's quite, quite, quite a long time he's been putting this together and he's now training someone to be in line for him. But they had approximately seventy-five students from all five of our high schools and they were engaged in, um, working with different elements of the county in the morning, then had a nice lunch and, uh, Dr. Taylor joined several of the school board members. Ms. Guy, you weren't there? Ms. Sigman was there, Dr. Warner was there, Ms. Randall was there, I were there. Um, and they did have snacks, so you missed an opportunity, Ms. Halsted. But it was, it's, it's just amazing because in, in the afternoon, after, after the lunch and after the students had been through different, um, parts of the, the county government, uh, they had a mock, uh, hearing, a public hearing. And this, they had others, you know, some of the students were in the audience and there were seven students who were supervisors for each of our districts. They had a county administrator who was very impressive about, I'll get back to you on that, we'll get staff to get those answers. And, um, it, it, it's just, just amazing. And, and the, um, the, the comments, you know, were, were very well thought out, some, some were entertaining intentionally. It had to do whether the Washington commanders should build a stadium here in Stafford County next to Stafford High School. Um, but, but an amazing opportunity for, for the students and I really give Mr. Cohen a lot of, you know, a lot of thanks and credit for that because it's, it's a, it's very much planning involved in that, but the, the lessons that the students learn and will take on, you know, with them are, are very, very valuable. Last week, I attended the Stafford Education Association, um, monthly meeting and a lot of the discussion had to do with the fundraising events that they have underway to raise funds so that they can, um, give scholarships and grants to our teachers and do things to enhance the, the Stafford County Public Schools. And one of the, uh, the main events that they're going to have is coming up in May and that's the Evening with the Stafford Stars and the Stafford Stars are our students, they're performers, and that will be at, um, Pratt Park. If you're, you're interested, the, it's going to be, I think, on their website. Um, and we can, we can also make that information available as well. And the, the proceeds from that are used to, to come back to the schools. Uh, they also talked about the scholarships. For many years, they've been giving a scholarship to a student from every high school. It was in the past always for a student who was going into teaching. I'm not sure the, the, the criteria right now, but, but they, you know, are very generous and with their scholarships. And they also talked about teacher grants. If you've been around Stafford for a while, you'll know that there's a lot of innovative teaching that goes on and a lot of that innovative teaching has a cost. And the foundation has tried to defer that, uh, make it more affordable for teachers to do these innovative things by giving them a grant when they, they apply with an application. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, I had a delightful interview with the, um, the editor of the newspaper at Rock Hill Elementary School and the photographer. And they asked me, who was my favorite grade school teacher? And I had, I really had to think about that because it's been a long time. But, I mean, just, just, just adorable, adorable students and incredibly, um, astute. I look for great things from these, these students in, in the future. The, the young lady who was, is the, the editor, she had a page of questions and then she, she hand-wrote all the answers, so none of this technology. I was very impressed. But, and then she had to go back and transcribe it and, and, and write it all up. And the photographer, you know, she was asking questions and we, we had a really, really good dialogue, but they, I really had to think about, you know, the, the answers to these questions that they were asking. But, but the, the young lady who's the editor actually proposed to the principal, you know, having a, a student newspaper. And, and that's how they, that's how it came about. So, you know, we are reaching these students and these are two students who are in the fourth grade, so they're rising fifth graders. They'll have another year, um, in elementary school. So there's lots of, lots of good things happening in, in Stafford County Public Schools. All right, I will, um, next call on Dr. Taylor for superintendent comments and then we'll get on to our action items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Um, the spring season definitely offers us an opportunity for renewal and it's the perfect time to open our discussions about our future through the strategic planning process. And, uh, I will say, our first event, as a reminder, is in fact April twenty-first at North Stafford High School, but I do have a couple of corrections. Our second event is not at Stafford High School, it's actually here at Bande. And our third one, uh, is not at the Howell branch of the library, but the Porter branch of the library. So I do want to get that out. We'll, we'll put that out widely on social media to encourage our community to be a part of this. There's so many fantastic spring events that we've had the opportunity to participate in, uh, recently. Just earlier today, I had the, the pleasure to be a scorekeeper along with Ms. Osborne, who shared duties with me today, um, at the thirteenth annual middle school Battle of the Books. It was fierce competition at the Battle of the Books. Uh, fifteen hard questions about fifteen different texts. Uh, and students had to guess the author and the book title. It was definitely fierce competition and tight scores, uh, between our middle schools who worked very hard and brought all of their top spirit today. But we've had a ton of events, uh, that we've been able to welcome back to in-person, whether it's Middle School Model UN or whether it is the Fine Arts Festival or Student Government Day or Steam Nights or a whole host of events, uh, that we've just been super excited to, to welcome back. And, uh, I would be remiss if, if I didn't mention this as well. I am also the parent of a senior, uh, who is attending prom. Uh, as a matter of fact, his prom is this weekend. Uh, we are excited to welcome back prom season, uh, but we encourage all of our students to have a very safe prom and, uh, and to, to be on their absolute best behavior for prom and to get home safely, um, to their parents. Uh, Prom Night is a fantastic event and something that we're celebrating, but we do want to encourage our families to give reminders to our kids about safety and, uh, and making sure that our kids are well-rested for that fantastic event and can have a great night and make one, a ton of wonderful memories, but that they also get home safely. Uh, we have a holiday weekend coming up and, uh, this is a perfect time for our teachers, staff, students and families to spend some time together, uh, to rest and rejuvenate. Our teachers have been working so hard and our staff has been working so hard, uh, and, and they really do need the, the break and this is a perfect time because we've got the mad dash to the end. It is five weeks to graduation and six weeks to the end of the school year and, uh, then we get to do it all again. So it's very exciting times in Stafford County Public Schools. Um, I do want to address just a couple last little announcements, uh, to share that I'm very, very excited about. On Monday, April twenty-fifth at seven PM in the school board chambers at the Bande office, we are welcoming the countywide PTA, PTO, PTSO. Uh, we, we are going to have a countywide event and encourage, um, representatives from all of our school parent organizations, uh, to come together under one banner to see how they can help, uh, Stafford County Public Schools. I've asked a parent, Laura Ly Davis from Winding Creek, uh, to help assist with facilitating this group until they elect some officers and organize efficiently. Uh, but this is a great opportunity for some of our PTOs from across the county to learn from one another, to share resources, to share ideas and to move our county forward in a bigger direction. Uh, we are also in the midst of our spring clothing drive in Stafford County Public Schools and I'd like to thank our library partners, uh, for not just putting up a book club display of, uh, our leadership book series this summer, but also for helping out with our clothing drive, uh, which is going on now through April twenty-ninth at the Howell Branch, the Porter Branch and the, and the Bande Branch. So, um, if you have spare clothes or, uh, you get to the place where the, the kiddos are not fitting into the winter gear like they did at the beginning of winter and it's time to pass that along to the next generation, we'll gladly take that, um, and make sure it gets into proper hands, uh, at those branch libraries. Thank you so much. Um, our mobile enrollment for kindergarten also continues, uh, throughout, uh, the, the next several months and ends, uh, in July. Uh, we have, uh, our Mobile Enrollment Fest at various locations and we encourage folks that have a rising kindergartner or anyone else new to the community, we'd love to welcome you into Stafford County Public Schools and get you registered for school. We'd love to have you next year. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Five weeks to graduation? Wow.
Yes, ma'am. And actually, I, I did think of two other announcements that I'd like to share. Two other enhancements to our website, uh, since we're talking about graduation in summer, our summer school, uh, information is now posted on our website and information is being sent to, uh, to, to some of our families to encourage them to participate in summer school. Uh, we had a very successful summer school program last year and we, uh, have enhanced a lot of that for this year. And, uh, we'd like to welcome folks to our Great Learning Adventure and some of our credit recovery and credit, uh, addition programs that we're offering this summer, all of which will be free of charge this year. So parents can expect a full summer school experience, uh, free of charge. The last enhancement to our website, um, which is, and we are paying for that through our Esser dollars. Um, the last, uh, enhancement, uh, to our website is an important update from the Governance Committee that Dr. Warner mentioned earlier in her report, is that the school board's FAQ is now live and is on the school division website. Anybody who'd like to visit, visit our school system website, learn a little bit more about how the school board works or operates, we encourage you to do so by visiting the School Board tab and scrolling down to the Frequently Asked Questions tab. And there you can learn a little bit about, um, our school board members, how to get on the board, what the school board does, different roles and responsibilities, terms of office and so forth and so on. And we encourage you to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That brings us to action items. We have three action items. The first is twelve point oh one, award of contract in the amount of one hundred fifty five thousand twenty-five dollars to Mannington Commercial through Sourcewell to provide classroom flooring and other flooring materials for various school locations using budgeted FY22 annual operating funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Chase.
Second.
Second by Dr. Warner. Any discussion?
I do. Um, Madam Chair, uh, didn't we not replace carpet at Gale last year?
We did.
We did? And so are we doing more areas or did it? I mean, I know the, the problem I'm having, I guess, a little bit is that we've allowed so much, you know, eating in the classrooms this year, so I'm not sure if we're replacing carpets that have been damaged by that or is this intended replacement? I'm not sure.
It is intended. It's the, uh, office areas, uh, and then some other areas that didn't get done last summer. So, uh, it's not damaged from food. It's, it's original carpet to the building, so twenty-some years old.
Okay. So this is off, office for all three? Or is it three?
For Gale?
Well, is, I also saw, um, Anthony Burns and Winding Creek, Rocky, I mean, is this all office suites for all of them? This is just regular?
Classrooms.
Classrooms? Okay.
Is it car- is it all carpet or just flooring? Are we talking about carpeting or are we talking about like?
It could be, um.
Either or?
Could be carpet or, uh, tile floor.
And are we using carpet squares or are we using?
We are.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Brings us to twelve point oh two, award of a contract in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred eleven dollars to Game Day Inc. for maintenance and repair of the grass athletic fields at middle and high schools using budgeted FY20 operating funds. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Randall, second by Ms. Halsted. Any discussion?
I had a question.
Oh, I think Dr. Chase will get you next.
We may have the same question. So, uh, at the high school, we've just, the board just voted to put turf at all the high schools, so I, maybe do we have some fields that are not turf?
Yeah, there are, there are fields, there are other fields.
Yes, ma'am. These are the Patriot Bermuda Fields, uh, practice fields and middle school competition fields.
I had a similar question because what it looks like in the itemized list is that, like I thought the stadium field is what we are replacing, that's still on here. So I just wanted to make sure that that was updated and the, you know.
Yeah, this is a laundry list of tasks, so not every field will receive everything on this list. So each field's inspected, um, and then applied the proper maintenance.
Okay. So, so if I can follow up then, how do we then know the cost if it could change based on what each school needs?
We have historical data from year to year, so we know about what it's going to cost us, give or take. You know, depending on weather and, and different, like, different things like that may impact it.
Madam Chair, this is also not to exceed that, that figure. So I think you're, you're, you're able to go under that, but not over that.
Okay, any other questions? All right, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. The last action item, award of a contract in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Finley Asphalt for asphalt provision and repairs at multiple facilities using budgeted FY22 operating funds.
Motion to approve the, um, asphalt?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Warner, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? No? All right, cast your votes. Dr. Warner? Oh, there we go. Tally the votes. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to information items. Uh, thirteen oh one, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three annual Head Start policies and plans and authorization for the school board chair to sign the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Head Start and early Head Start refunding, COLA and quality applications and receipt of mandatory annual school board training regarding Head Start from Mrs. Massey. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your time, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. Um, appreciate your time. Stafford School's Early Childhood has several programs under the umbrella and one of those is the federally funded Head Start Program and there are certain regulations that we have to, um, adopt and follow because of the federal funding. And one of those is your annual training, which is what this is. So this is our theme for the year is, um, imagine the possibilities. And I can't make this. What am I doing wrong? Sure.
I like that.
Okay. So one of the things. Okay. So one of the things, our program goals for the year, we have five-year goals that are adjusted each year by our policy council based on self-assessment committee reports in the interest of continuous improvement. And so those goals, if you look into the packet that you were given, you can see the updates on those goals, but they overall are improving the quality of the facilities for the safety of our children, and then increasing our children's success in kindergarten, and then improving the quality of program compliance with the Head Start regulations, with training for the board, staff, and parents. Last year, we served 603 children, with 213 of those funded with the federal funds for Head Start, 30 with early Head Start funds, 80 with the state Virginia Preschool Initiative Funds, and 280 with early childhood special education. One of the things that our program really focuses on is outcomes for our families. We have a scale family assessment that is based on a rubric, and you can see that last year, even in the middle of a COVID crisis, our families, our staff worked hard with their families to make a lot of gains, and we were very excited about those. This is our report card. We do it three times a year, and the pink areas are kindergarten. So if our children are in the pink area, then they are actually on the kindergarten level. The top two blue areas are four-year-olds, and then the middle, green and blue are three-year-olds, two-year-olds, and then the yellow are infants and toddlers. And so we looked at our gains in all of these areas and broke it down by the different groups. We also look at the gains that our students make when they go off to kindergarten. We compare them with their peers. And last year, we really looked hard at the VKRP scores in math. And this year, we're doing a lot of our focus on math and working with our specialists at the central office level on improving our work in math. Our PLCs have been focused on the math objectives as well. And we're going to be doing our K, pre-K transition training with our kindergarten counterparts, as well as our pre-K on the math areas, especially around numeracy. This is just for your information. This is the training part about the responsibilities of the school board. We have a policy council that approves things in advance, and Dr. Warner has been a very faithful member of that group. Thank you. And then we bring those before you all for your approval. So that's what's in this packet, are all the wonderful things that the program has worked on all year to bring before you all for your And so these slides have all of those duties that are required by the federal government. And then there is an in-pass procedure if there should ever be a disagreement between policy council and the school board, which we've never had, so that's there. But...and then I'm required to also give you all training on our selection and enrollment process. So this is an application for the Head Start and Virginia Preschool Initiative Program. On the back of the application, there's a point system in order to rank our candidates. It's not a first-come, first-served. It's the neediest. We want to make sure we're serving. So you get points based on our community assessment. For instance, in our community, there's the public transportation system is not as strong as it might be in District of Columbia, so not having a car in Stafford County is a difficulty. And so that gives you points that would help you get your child into the program, because we know you're struggling if you don't have that. These are the poverty guidelines. Just for your information, this is 100% of the poverty level. And then this is the income calculation sheet. So this is how you're found eligible for the program, and then based on how many applicants we have, we use the point system to rank who gets into the program. But first, you have to be eligible. So to be eligible for Head Start, you have to be 100% of the poverty level. You can be over income. We have a 10%...oops, I did this again. 10% of our program can be over income, and we try to focus on our children with special needs in that area. If you're homeless, in foster care, receive TANF or SSI, then you're eligible for Head Start. For VPI, if you're homeless, if your parent is a high school dropout, we can take...and they just break it down because they want different numbers reported, but you can make up to 200% of the poverty level and be eligible for VPI. You can be 350% with an IEP, but we've also added local at-risk criteria. If your child has an IEP, or if they're learning English, they're also eligible for VPI, the state funding. So that's just a little quick overview of the eligibility process. And then this is a website that has a lot of early childhood information, as well as Head Start information about our rules and regulations. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for your support and the continued support you have for the youngest and most needy of our children in Stafford Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Dr. Warner?
Just a comment. I was really impressed last year, especially with the COVID shutdown, how engaged your family service workers are, and how all the families met their goals last year. That was really pretty impressive. And I just love visiting Head Start and seeing the little ones and doing their things. And they even got to do a field trip on campus, which more of those are starting to come back, and it's nice to see. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And Ms. Guy?
Sure. My youngest attended Head Start, and I just...I've never felt so supported as a parent when my daughter, Neveah, went. It was fantastic. I know you remember Neveah. But all of you guys, I remember begging the principal, like, could you just retain her? And they were like, stop. But you guys were just so great, and so I'm just really happy to see you, and I'm glad to see all these amazing things you're still doing for people.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Massey, perhaps in the fall, if you have your monthly meetings with the parents, that we could do something, as we have in the past. With the school board, we've actually served a dinner to the families, and then the students put on some entertainment before the...the parents went off for their little educational portion of the meeting. But I think that would be great if we can get on the schedule for that. I think the new members particularly would very much enjoy that opportunity.
I would like to institute that again next year as well. We, for your benefit, we would invite the board of supervisors and the school board to serve a meal together for our...
Nice.
I know. It's a great bonding experience, but for our families and for Family Learning Night.
We could center that around a book. The school board would provide a book for all the students and families.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Sigman might have a recommendation. Well, thank you, Ms. Massey. Thank you for staying this late for us. We'll try to get you out earlier.
Sure. Any questions about the refunding application?
Next meeting. No, this will come back to us for action at the next meeting.
I did put in for approval of the COLA and quality, so I don't have to come back to you all for that. I'm anticipating about $50,000 based on what Congress approved, but I haven't gotten the exact numbers yet.
Okay. And for all of our members, Ms. Massey is a miracle worker. She gets the federal government to fund everything.
Not everything.
Well, well, almost. I mean, you got the roof fixed down there.
I got the roof fixed.
You get the vehicles.
That's right. We were in the middle of purchasing a bus. It hasn't arrived yet, but we've ordered it, so.
I know. And this is all, you know, the federal government funds. They love Mrs. Massey. She gets perfect scores on every...
We'll see about that. We had a federal review this year that was a little tough, so we'll see how much they love us.
Was that the one that Dr. Warner and I participated? Oh, I could tell they loved you, so. Anyway, I mean, I have been involved in them from time to time, and all we hear from the federal reviewers is what a model program we have here in Stafford County, and how exceptional it is and the services that we offer. They're very impressed.
A kudos out to our health coordinators. They actually have been invited to be on a panel at the National Head Start Association to talk about their health advisory committee, and how successful it is. And that's a national honor to be on that, so we're really excited for that.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Massey.
Thank you, Mrs. Massey.
All right. That brings us to 1302. And what I'd suggest on these policies, if there's anything that any of the board members want to discuss, we can do that tonight. Otherwise, we'll just move along with them.
So just, I sent a bunch of questions off to Thomas earlier in the week, and he answered them for me. They were basic, generic.
Is he going to send them?
If you guys want to see them, I'll forward them to Missy. I mean, they were just clarifications. Oh, no, it's...okay, sorry. They were clarifications on some of the points and stuff like that. I just wanted to have them answered before any discussion, but I'll have Missy.
And if you haven't already responded, you know, generally, we share them with all the board members, because it's educational for all of us to have the questions and answers as well.
I always forget that I have to do it through Missy, so I will forward what he has sent me back to you guys, because they were just...I just wanted to get them off the plate.
We can just ask Dr. Taylor to forward them, and then you won't have to bother.
This does also comply with changes in the state law, and there is an accompanying regulation for training that will...
Are you talking about 1302?
2603. I'm sorry.
Right. Yeah.
Yes, 1302. Yes, Policy 2603.
Oh, it's on those double, isn't it?
So this is partly in compliance with state law, changes in state law, so.
Okay. All right. So that's adoption of proposed amendments to Policy 2603. 1303, adoption of proposed amendments to Policy 7201, people transportation. I think Dr. Warner mentioned that was based on the ad hoc committee recommendations. 1304, approval of and authorization for the school board chair to sign the CPSC...I'm going to just say Stafford County Public School. It's easy for me to spell it out. Career and technical education, local plan and budget for the 2022-2023 school year for submission to the Virginia Department of Education. 1305, approval of the special education annual plan for the 2022-2023 school year. Did you have a comment on that?
I just was going to say that I was at the meeting on February 28th, and everything seemed to be fine.
Okay, that's on the special ed annual plan? Okay. 1306, award of a contract to Sun Tribe Solar for solar power purchase agreement services to install solar panels at North Stafford High School with no upfront cost to the school division. And I think, Dr. Warner, did you mention that before?
This was done at...presented at the Fab meeting. It was excellent, and I appreciate Jason?
Josh.
Josh. I have nephews named Jason and Josh, so I'm sorry. But this is very exciting because North Stafford will have the largest solar array in Virginia. So he's got some...this was a very exciting opportunity for us.
Yeah, we reviewed some stuff with our procurement department to ensure that we had a contract vehicle that we could utilize for this. We reviewed all of our roofs throughout the division. We need some work on our roofs that didn't quite put many of them into the classification of suitable for this program. North Stafford happened to be a perfect candidate. It's an all-electric school. The roof is massive. It's the largest plant that we have in the school division. And being an all-electric school, it'll utilize the entire roof surface. So we were able to get about $2.3 million of cost avoidance by taking on the PowerPoint or the power purchase agreement through Sun Tribe. So we would pay them as a new utility vendor versus paying Dominion Energy, who is our current electrical provider. That was done with standard rates that we've seen over the last 10 to 15 years, mostly 2.5% rate escalations, where we are currently getting ready to see a substantial rate escalation due to fuel riders and stuff that are coming down the pipe. So the first year would be savings of over $6,000, about $6,700. At 25-year term would be about $2.3 million, and that delta should increase depending on what our utility rates do. Energy rates are as volatile now as ever, and by volatile, I mean they're not coming down. So we were able to negotiate this to a very low rate, the actual rate that we pay per kilowatt hour, and we were able to get the rate locked for 25 years. So the rate for that facility will not increase for the duration of the term. So we will pay today's electric rate on the power for that facility until the deal is over. There's no cost to the school division. There's no maintenance cost to the school division. There's no liability to the school division. The company rents our roof to produce the power, which we purchase from them. It's not deemed as a construction contract. It's a service. This has all been vetted through our procurement department. So it's a 25-year term. If you guys have any questions?
I just have two. And we got solar power at my house, and I still have this question. So if the power goes out, you have a power outage at the school?
We would resort to our generator setup.
We still go to generator backup?
With life safety for the linemen providing service throughout the utility grid.
There's no...because I know you can get battery backup for the solar system, for the solar panels.
It just...it destroys the monetary value of...
Okay. Because I thought that was one thing that they asked. All right. So we just go to general generator backup? We still have to rely on keeping those current?
Ideally, it would kick back on, and we could still net feed, or we could still power a building and kind of, you know, have our cake and eat it too. But the safety of the linemen working on the potential hazards throughout the grid, we can't do it based on life safety codes.
Because you have to shut the whole system off?
Yeah, there has to be a disconnect from where the line could be broke in our facility, which is capable of generating power.
Okay. The next question is, you said it's $2.3 million over 25 years as a saving potential?
As a cost avoidance. So if you take what we would pay Dominion based on our rate now and the historical rate increases we see over the course of a year, and extrapolate that over the 25-year term versus what we would pay Sun Tribe at a locked rate, we will avoid paying Dominion Energy $2.3 million over 25 years.
And is it $6,000 a year? It just goes up with that, whatever the...
Goes up, based on the...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood it. All right.
As the...your energy rates increase, your delta increases, your savings delta increases.
But so is 2.3 the max, or it's open to being potentially even more?
That's done based on our current rates and the predicted rate of 2.5% increase.
Got it.
If it jumps 5%, our delta grows. If one year we only see 2%, our delta may shrink just a hair, but based on 10- to 15-year averages, we don't foresee that 2.5% ever not being met, especially over the course of a three-to-five-year average.
Yeah. No, this is exciting. Cool. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Guy?
I have a quick question. You mentioned that they rent our roof from us, and then we pay them for the energy that we get. But do they pay us for the rental of the roof?
No, it's a trade-off. They use our roof for us receiving a discounted utility rate.
Okay. And then after 25 years, it would remain, right? The solar, and we would just do another contract?
We would have the option to buy out the solar array for a fixed price based on the deterioration of the system, or we terminate the deal, and Sun Tribe, the vendor, would be responsible for the responsible disposal of anything that is no longer feasible, because a solar panel will deteriorate as time goes on.
Okay.
You know, each year, you're going to lose a little bit of efficiency on each panel just based on degradation factors.
So is the life of a solar panel maybe 25 years, or?
25 to 30 is what you want. By the time you get to that 25-year term, some of the reliability could become an issue over those last five years. Therefore, it's best to either, you know, purchase the system and start maintaining and replacing, or terminate the contract and, you know, focus your efforts on something further.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, if I just would chime in with one comment, and that's to add that as we think about our existing capital assets and the physical structures that we have in your portfolio right now and the age of our existing buildings, we do think about the sunset of when that building may have exhausted its useful life. Interestingly enough, that coincides nicely with this contract, and North Stafford High School should be aging out of its useful life at around the same time as this contract ends.
And to support that, we have done HAC renovations. A lot of our renovations are going to kind of term out at that 25-year mark, so, yeah, North Stafford's day might be coming.
I do have a follow-up question on that, though. If we decided to rebuild North, I am not suggesting that because we've got high school six and probably high school seven coming down the pike, but if we wanted to do something, you know, with North and that roof were no longer available for this use, do we have a provision?
and that roof were no longer available for this use, do we have a, a provision in, in the contract that would allow us for, you know, early release or termination without a penalty?
There, there is a cost associated with termination of the contract early. We also have the ability to just pay for uninstall and a reinstall utilizing the same system on the facility that could be replacing North Stafford. But there is a penalty if you have to terminate the lease. And that penalty decreases as the term of the contract goes.
Could we, could we just make that contract available for the board to review if we choose between now and the next meeting? I think that might be, that might be interesting. Thank you, Dr. Chase.
Yeah. And I just wanted to mention that when this was presented to the Fab, you noted that there are also some educational opportunities associated with this. So the students at North Stafford will have an opportunity to, to see this in action and learn more about solar power.
Yeah. There are dashboards involved that allow, you know, real-time interaction with students and the performance of the system that's installed on the building. You can get onto it. You can allow, you can use Alt for like your energy calculations. A lot of the CTE programs will utilize it for the green energy programs. Math departments can use it for, like I said, load calculations that you typically do in some electrical engineering classes. There's, there's a lot of work that can be done with the dashboard that students can real-time interact with as the building itself is producing the electricity.
Ms. Sigman?
I just wanted to know, are we currently considering this for any other buildings? Or are we kind of waiting to see and then consider for other buildings?
We, we did consider all facilities in the county. Unfortunately, some of our facilities have contracts with Dominion that we can't reduce our expenditures on that facility. But so much paying for construction costs over the term of the life of the building, there's contract minimums is what they call them. So you can never get down below a certain cost. So you can put all the solar that you want on a building, you're still gonna pay that minimum demand charge for that facility. But we did evaluate every building. We have a lot of shingled roofs. We had four other schools in the project at one point. But with the market commodities being as volatile as they are right now, the vendor is no longer able to support any projects under 500 kilowatts. That's why North Stafford remained viable because it is such a massive project.
Are we looking at it for high school six?
Yes, we are, we are looking to be solar-ready for all future builds.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much.
Not necessarily solar-installed, but solar, solar-ready.
Yeah. So let's, let's explain just very briefly what solar-ready means is that you, you effectively have the wiring all set up, and you are ready for a solar install to occur very easily with attachments to outsides of the building, roofs and whatnot. But that we've run the wiring and preset everything and ready to roll.
Yeah, all your building orientations, your roof types, your engineering.
It also requires a certain type of roof because, like you said, you can't put it on shingled roofs.
Yeah, built-up thirty-to-forty-year roofs or standing seam metal roofs are ideal. The metal roofs especially, because they have such a long lifecycle.
Thank you for the additional information. I'll look forward to looking at the contract.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
I'm probably the only one that's going to look forward to it.
You're the only person who will enjoy it.
I know. Speak, speaking of which, here we go, right down my lane. Thirteen oh seven, approval of the conveyance of two.
International.
That sounded more interesting than what we're doing. Yes. All right. Thirteen oh seven, approval of the conveyance of two twenty-foot easements over and across the Stafford Middle School site as requested by Stafford County. Mr. Anderson, I noticed there are no plaits attached to the agenda. Can, can you get those for us for the next time?
Yes. I thought the plaits are attached. I saw, didn't have the resolution. And there was a glitch with Board Docs. We had that in there. And then it was our fault. We tried to get it in there at last minute. It just did not attach. I thought the resolution was the only thing missing when I was looking at it just before the meeting.
Oh, well.
They're not. Okay, there might be an issue with Board Docs.
I don't think we've had these since you've been here. I'm notorious for looking at these.
I have them right here.
These, these easements. But I was, is any, any questions from the board? Because I have a couple. Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So has the three-on-three met to discuss this and why we're doing it and what it's being used for?
The three-on-three has not met at all, as Ms. Randall mentioned.
Yeah, I can explain that if you like.
I don't know that I will be able to support it before our board and their board have met. So until that time, I'm very happy that you've brought this. But if they're unavailable to meet to discuss this with our committee, then I'm unavailable to vote on it.
All right. So is that a, well, we'll have our discussion, and then you may, you may make a motion. But if you make a motion now, we can't have the discussion.
Right. And this is just for action right now?
No, it's for information. Right. But traditionally.
I'm sorry, information, there'll be action for the.
Well, if, if, if the board doesn't defer it for a later date. Any other comments, questions? Well, my, my, my comment is, it's, it's very unusual that the county's willing to pay us for this. And they've offered, I mean, it's minimal, but $500 and then, you know, $1,500 or so dollars. I've just, and not for tonight. But I'm curious about why, you know, they are, for the first time that I can recall, offering a payment. But then my other question has to do with why does the county need or want this easement? Is it for county business? Is it for, you know, other kind of business? Because certainly, I'm assuming it's not for the benefit of the school.
Well, actually, there will be some benefit to the school. And I walked the site with Mr. Scott Powell, who is with the Utility Division of Stafford County. And what this will do is actually eliminate a pump station. So it's gonna save money for the county. It'll also eliminate a point of possible failure in the, in the sewer line. So it's basically taking a pump station away and then making a gravity sewer. And the easement is actually for the gravity sewer from Stafford Middle School, and Brookpoint High School tie into that as well. So it's a, it's a good project for the county. It's a good project for us. And I walked the site with Mr. Powell. It goes right on the edge of the property line. So there's no interference with anything that we might want to do later. And I think it's a good project. They're not sure they can eliminate the pump station this year. They're, they have other priorities in that division that they're needing to take care of. But this would at least have the easements ready so that they could proceed with this project this year or soon after when they're ready to do that.
Okay. So, and then my question, I mean, you can get this answer for me at a later date or for the board, is, you know, why now are they offering to, you know, compensate us for an easement? Because we've been asked to grant easements and in many, you know, many cases have granted easements to the county, and there's never been any compensation offered.
Sure. And this is, I have learned a lot on this. I've not handled a lot of easements in my career. But this is something that I worked on with the attorney that we had involved, the county attorney. And that's just the amount they came up with. It seemed reasonable. So that's what we agreed to as far as what to propose for your approval.
Okay. And did we have an attorney review this?
We did. Both the county attorney and then we had.
Well, I would, I would like to make sure that our attorney costs are covered by whatever this compensation that we're going to receive. I mean, I don't want to end up paying money to give something away.
Okay, I can, I can request that.
Yeah. But anyway, did, did you wanna make a motion, Dr. Chase?
Yes.
Before you do. Any other questions or comments? No?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would make a motion that this be deferred until the three-on-three has had an opportunity to meet and discuss it so that the, the members of the three-on-three on our board can come back and make an informed recommendation to the rest of this board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No? All right. All, all cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes. Well, that's something that won't be back on the agenda next time unless we miraculously have our three-on-three sometime in the next ten days. All right. Now, that brings us to an item that I'm sure we will have discussion on this evening. And we may even want to put it on for information a second time, depending on the board's wish. And that's action, information item thirteen oh eight, approval of changes to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school calendar year. Dr. Taylor, do you guys?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. We've got a, a calendar before the, the board. And I would actually recommend that if you do make changes to your calendar, you have an existing calendar for the next school year. If you do make changes to the calendar, that, that they be done and finalized sooner rather than later, just so that we can inform families. This is a little bit late coming. We were, we were definitely waiting on the disposition of the board in terms of its outcome regarding the schedule, because that outcome did involve adding a substantial amount of instructional hours, which did give us a little bit of flexibility in terms of our instructional day. And so we are recommending a couple of changes to the, to the calendar that delineate time and dates of specific trainings and teacher workdays, but also adjusting the start time a little bit. Contrary to some belief, we are not messing with the winter holiday. That has actually not changed in this calendar. So based on what the board had previously approved. And I'm gonna leave it up to Dr. Nichols to fill in some of the blanks and to answer some questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So just to go right forward with some questions. I think the biggest feedback that I've seen just coming from the teachers and stuff is, what is the, why are we having like so many teacher workdays at the beginning? We're starting them August first, coming in. You have a new teacher institute, which I understand. But you've got almost seven days calendar, calendar-wise dedicated to teacher workdays before we even get started. So can you help me, yeah, can you help me understand?
I'll take this one. Yeah, absolutely. There, there's a, this is actually a practice in a lot of different school districts. And I, and I get that there's two pretty significant changes on the calendar, which are new to Stafford County. And so some of this is a change just in general. And there is some flexibility with every change that we make. And the first change is having a, an adjusted start to the school year in two different ways. The first way would be to have a transition day for our transition grades in kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade. That is probably the most significant change because this is an opportunity for our most vulnerable kids transitioning in school, to have access to the school and have the whole day about them. And, and a way that we can structure the day to, to welcome them into that environment. This is also the group of students that do not know their way around the school building, do not know what bus they ride, do not know a whole host of things. And so this is an opportunity for the whole school to structure its day around them. The second significant change is the one that you're referencing is why on earth would we take off that Monday and Tuesday first? Well, the first week of school has some struggles. And I would say that in order for us to get to a successful start to the school year, starting in the middle of the week does have some advantages. And there are some advantages to starting in the middle of the week in terms of teacher preparation and making sure that teachers feel confident that their classrooms are prepared. And then there's another set of, of expectations that we are setting the first week of school and how quickly we can jump right into academics, let alone how exhausting the first week of school can be for our students, teachers, and parents. And trying to manage those expectations a little bit from a staggered start. Something that is important to us is that we want to make sure that we have ample time to do at least an X-Y day for some of our secondary students who are on an every-other-day schedule for some of their classes. So at least two days that week plus that starter day does give us a little bit of an advantage. But as with everything, we are flexible to what the board wants and needs. We feel like there's some significant positive enhancements on this calendar in terms of labeling specifically which days are teacher workdays and which days are professional learning days. This is something that our teachers have asked for numerous times, and we are happy to deliver. As a matter of fact, the, the one change that we would bring back to this board between now and your next meeting is to delineate during the teacher work week in August, which days are professional development days and which days are teacher workdays, so that our teachers can have a very clear look about what to expect in terms of which days are committed to professional learning versus which ones are committed to teacher work.
And you're speaking directly to that August first through ninth, right? Like being able to have some flexibility and wiggle room in there.
That's right.
Okay, cool.
So I see on this calendar right now, it says that all those days are teacher workdays. And then it says that the seventeenth of February, for example, is a professional development day. November seventh is a professional development day. So does that mean teacher workday, and I'm not, you know, my thought of teacher workday means I can go into my classroom or my office, and alls I have to do is focus on getting ready to teach? And so are you saying that August first, second, third, fourth, fifth, eighth, and ninth, that nobody's gonna bother these teachers? They're gonna be in the building doing their work? Or are there going to be something else going?
No, we're gonna bug them. We're, we're absolutely gonna bug them.
Maybe we should re-change what's written here.
And so that's what I was going to, to say. That's the only change that we would bring back between this board meeting and the next board meeting is what that August timeframe does look like. In, in particular, we haven't set that schedule. And in fairness, we, there's only one known day, or actually two known days that we would use for professional development, the first and the fifth. But again, that is subject to change based on, you know, what the board does. The board could say, teachers come back Wednesday, the third. Or you could say that, no, you have to go to school the eighth and the ninth. And we would adjust the schedule accordingly. But there would be about two days out of that, out of that time period that we would commit to professional learning. The other days are absolutely set.
And, and does that mean the principal of the school understands that as well?
That's the idea.
Ms. Sigman?
I had it. I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, she, we'll get you next.
I think my biggest question right now is that on our approved calendar, we're at one hundred and eighty-one days. And on the proposed calendar, we're at one sixty-six to one seventy-seven. But it looks like you're only taking two, maybe three days away with this kind of staggered start. So where did the other day or two go?
On the schedule, we are taking away the first two days of school. And then we're taking away two professional days. We're taking away for professional, November seventh and February seventeenth. We're also taking away the seventh of October, which we've, yeah.
Okay. That looks like it was, oh, that's just the end of nine weeks. That's not quite purple.
Yep.
The seventh, Monday, November seventh.
Okay.
And February seventeenth.
Okay.
There's a table.
So how it's structured right now, you've got a, you've got a teacher workday at the end of every marking period. That is an unencumbered teacher workday, which has been a huge request of our teachers.
Yes.
Brother grading.
And then you have set aside professional learning days at, at some pretty reasonable intervals. One is on the President's Day holiday weekend. So for our students and families, this has been a request where if you're gonna take off a day, put it on a holiday weekend so that we can do something with it. Don't put it in on a Wednesday.
Right.
You know, or, or don't do Monday, the thirteenth, and do two back-to-back three-day weekends. Give us a long four-day weekend as an exchange. And then the other one is tied to the Election Day weekend as well, where we would be closed for Election Day because we're polling sites. And there's the Veterans Day holiday that week. So it's, it's not a whole lot of academic opportunities that week, but it would also be a week that was already disrupted and broken up to begin with. So.
Dr. Warner was next.
So the first week in August, the first through the ninth, are the, those days required for all incoming teachers or just new teachers? Or is there a flexible schedule there?
Those are for all teachers. The new teachers will come back during the week of July twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. So then all teachers report back on the first in the proposed calendar.
Ms. Randall?
Yes. So what about, so, well, a few things, actually. So the day that you bring in K six and nine, what about those teachers that have multiple levels of kids? So like, maybe you have a PE class or you have a math class where I have nine, ten, and elevens. I guess I'm just trying to see, like, is everyone gonna be in the building teacher-wise? But not everyone is gonna be teaching, or they're only gonna have part of their kids? Or, and, and I know that's also in effect in the middle school, too.
This is called Transition Day. So it's a time and a day just for kindergarteners, sixth graders, and ninth graders. And basically, it's all hands on deck. This is an opportunity for all our teachers to wrap their arms around these kids and help them have a great experience on that first day, to help them find their locker if they're secondary, to get to class, to go through the lunch line, to get on and off the bus, to give our transportation opportunity to run with these smaller numbers. Our educators, you know, they're looking forward to this because it gives them the opportunity to spend the time. because it gives them the opportunity to spend the time and set the tone and the positivity with the positive experience on that first day, because it can be so intimidating for kids to go up to a school where they've been in one classroom. When you're going to middle school, now you're changing classrooms. You're going to an elective with a lot of bigger kids in the building. So it's an opportunity that they look forward to spending time with all kids. So they'll be able to go to their class. And then if you say kindergarteners, you're going to have the rest of your, your 5th grade teachers, your 4th grade teachers, 3rd, 2nd, and 1st. They're all going to be there helping with the kindergarten teachers. Secondary, it's a day, you know, which we've traditionally had in high school, in my experience. We would do this way before the teachers come back, and you would try to pull teachers in to help. And it was hard to get everybody there, but having it during the regular day, it's a transition day. You have everybody there to help welcome your kids and set the tone in a positive experience for our kids. So don't think of it as, as a traditional school day in the sense that they're going to be going to math class and going over the first topics. They'll go to their classes.
Sure.
And meet their teachers.
Just maybe in a different way?
Yes.
Okay. And that's really kind of nice, because in the past, even like for orientations, we haven't had transportation.
Right.
For all kids. I mean, it's always encouraged and what have you, but maybe transportation is an issue for them. So, okay. And then also, I had asked Dr. Taylor about this earlier. I know in, in, you know, the recent time, we haven't been able to have them. But are we building, are, are there exam days or no exam days? Or what are we doing about that?
We've taken exam days out, and we've used regular final end-of-the-course exams or final unit exams in place of just coming to that one culminating activity. Because in a sense, it wasn't being used in which a true, I'm getting twisted tonight, cumulative that test where we'd be able to take that data and break it down, because you were going from first semester right into second semester, and you were starting new topics and things. So being able to focus on the unit test, their benchmarks, their other assessments, they're able to work with the kids to find out who needs support, who needs additional time.
Okay.
So we've changed that instead of taking those two-hour blocks, because, you know, having a 90-minute block or 120 minutes for an exam, most of the time they're finishing a lot shorter time than that.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Okay. And I can't remember where my other one was right now. I'll think of it.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I had one more question. Just to follow on. So the other thing that I, the people were questioning mostly was, so the 18th, 19th, and 20th, we have hold for graduation for high school. But high school's not done. They're coming back the next week. So can someone explain, because, I mean, what's going to go on that week, really? Not that we don't need to be in there, but is testing done? That's not a week for testing. So what, what is, how, how am I, how am I helping people understand that?
Well, traditionally, when we have seniors finish, we still have some end-of-course tests that are going on, like SOLs, where they have makeup tests or retesting, which they still need that time. Majority of seniors, we hope that they've already passed those SOL scores, so thus they're able to finish a little bit earlier, while we still have that additional week to finish up all assessments.
So it's really 9, 10, and 11 coming back with maybe some minimal senior interaction if they need to come back and finish one other thing?
Right.
Okay.
Again, the opportunity with graduation on multiple days allows everyone to participate at all the graduations.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I, but I, you know, like, I'm looking at, like, of course, as a senior, I want it to be done early. You know, tiny little reward for getting your high school, your school career over with is being done before the underclassmen. So I feel like that, for now, is all I have.
Ms. Randall?
I noticed that you have the number of days, 176, 177. And I know that on the proposed changes, you also have bank days. How is, I, I thought it wasn't days, it was hours that we were supposed to be calculating?
Yes, we have, when I calculate, you take those hours, and I turn them into days. So more people understand days when I say we have, you know, 12 banked days that we can use. So when you miss five days, we still know we have some extra.
Well, I wasn't sure if it was, if that's what we were saying here. So I'm glad.
It's converted.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Guy?
I just have a few questions that citizens were demanding that I answer. Obviously, I can't, so I had to wait for you. One of those questions were, and Dr. Taylor, you kind of alluded to it, that the December break was, was the same, right? So that has not been changed. Okay. Because I honestly didn't pay attention, so I, I couldn't say anything to that. Then I think-
Actually, there was one change to the winter holiday.
Okay.
It was noted as a professional day on January 4th, and now it is a standalone teacher workday because it is the end of the term. And we want that to be an unencumbered teacher workday, not a professional development day.
Okay.
I have a jump on that. You're, you're asking if it's the same number of days, not?
This individual was under the impression that the December days were, were, okay. Okay. Well, that's fine. I hope they're watching, because I can't take my notes. And then I think you guys mentioned, I think you mentioned that it would, for the kids that come back early, it would be an X and a Y day. They get the opportunity to do both, correct?
Yeah. If they're in high school or even at the middle school, they'd have an opportunity to meet both of their teachers.
Okay. Also, and I guess this is for the board, and I only got like eight or nine emails on this, so I'm not trying to act like I got 100 people asking me questions. But I did get a very similar, people were just wondering why there wasn't a survey that went out and asked parents or teachers or staff why their feelings on this. They feel like, you know, there's been enough change, and we should not consider this without, I guess, their input. And so I, I don't feel one way either way. I don't think we have to necessarily have a survey for everything we vote on. But they definitely wanted that brought to y'all's attention. And-
So I'll respond to that really quick. The time didn't allow for it, that's for one. And we are tight on time. This is late to be making a calendar change. The, the second thing is that we actually have received a tremendous amount of feedback on this. It hasn't been through a survey, but we receive a tremendous amount of feedback on the calendar. The most notable change on this calendar, interestingly enough, is not the start, it's not the end, it's not the winter holiday, because that didn't change. It's actually clearly noting which days are professional development days and which days are unencumbered teacher workdays. That is actually the most significant change on this calendar. And that is something that our teachers have very clearly been asking for. And as a stakeholder group, we feel compelled to act on that. In truth, we could not have made a modification to unencumbered teacher workdays without adding a couple of professional development days, because we would have had to collapse a couple days. The staggered start, I could definitely spend a lot of time asking our, our families about that. But candidly, this is new to Stafford County. So they don't have an experience with one way, or they don't have an experience with another. They're only familiar with one way of doing things. So to that, I'm not sure that there's a lot of, of value that we would get back from different perspectives on something they haven't experienced yet. That being said, let's give it a try. That's my recommendation.
And then my last, I'm sorry, my last question that I couldn't respond to, and maybe you can't either, was their question of, is the YMCA going to change anything? Or how would this affect before and after?
Go ahead.
It's a great question. I do believe that they will most likely work with this on this schedule.
Thank you. Ms. Sigman?
It's been a minute, but don't, have we not, as a county, had a staggered start for kindergarten anyway? I mean, my son's in 3rd grade, so it's been a few years. But, you know, I found that very valuable as a, even, you know, he's my third child to start kindergarten. But each time, it's very valuable to have that transition time. Next year, I'll have a rising middle schooler and a rising high schooler. I can see the value of feeling like that kindergarten mom all over again. So, you know, we have done something like this, and I think our younger families have experienced it, maybe not in the past couple of years due to COVID. But this isn't necessarily new. I feel like we're just kind of retrofitting something that I believe is of value to our, our new families in kindergarten. I think our new students at our elementary schools at least have, are invited to start like a day early, too, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, but we didn't provide transportation. So this is very different in that students whose parents cannot bring them for the kindergarten orientation day, that we will actually be making this available to every single student.
That's great. I mean, if, I mean, especially with the transportation part, I think getting kids used to that earlier, the better, is, is great. But if we're retrofitting something that we've done for kindergarten at each of our schools, I think that's a great way to kind of introduce our new families to their new buildings.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, now I have my, my question. First, I want to say I love the idea of the transition day. I think that's going to help everyone and, and make those students new, new to either elementary or kindergarten, middle and high, feel a lot more comfortable when all the rest of the students come in. I mean, they'll know where they're going. They'll know, you know, their buses and be able to make their way around school and hopefully, you know, know their teachers. But I do have a question about the two days, and only because I've gotten a few, but I think very well thought-out emails. And I've shared one that was addressed to me. I don't know, sometimes they write to all of us and, you know, don't put the board. But, you know, we all get our own with, with the board. But, but I, I think there were some, you know, valid questions raised about if we're going to have two extra days to, you know, why are we putting them at the beginning of the year? And, you know, if we're going to have seven teacher workdays, in effect, is there a way to, to spread them out? And I know we want to, to stagger that, that week. But I would suggest that we think about taking at least one of those days, maybe the August 9th day, making, you know, sliding the transition over to the 9th and, and making the first full school day the 10th, and then taking that August 9th day and, and putting it in for December 21st. Because that, and I, I know that winter break hasn't changed yet, but that would give the full two weeks, which I think gives, you know, our staff a really good feeling, you know, about winter break. And, and the teachers that have written in have, have commented that we need our instructional days early. It's much more valuable to me as a, a teacher, and I'm paraphrasing, to have the students for instruction before the SOLs rather than, than after. And also, several commented that by, by the week of that winter break, a lot of students just don't even come in. You know, they're, you know, gone on, on, you know, family activities, or the holiday, you know, in effect, will probably start after school on the 16th of December. So that's just something that, you know, I, I, you know, I'm throwing out there for, for consideration. And, and we will have an opportunity to hear from, from, from our, our teachers and our parents. And, and, you know, someone, one of the parents had commented, well, we've made plans. We've made plans, and the camps are closed. You know, everyone's planning on school starting on August 8th. And now if we throw in, oh, we're going to wait till officially the 11th for the non-transition day, then that does make it more difficult for families, for the younger students to, to find, find daycare. You know, that combined with the, the teachers saying that they prefer to have the instructional days early, and also saying that, you know, five weeks. Now, this is just the ones that have written so far. So I'd encourage anybody that has any other feelings to, you know, let us know. But the, the five days is enough. And I, I think the feeling is not, not that they don't want two extra days, but they would prefer to use them in, in later, later in the year and not have it all gathered there at the beginning. So it's just something to, to think about. But I, I definitely want to, to, to move on with that transition day. I think, I think that has a lot of value. And I think someone mentioned that it's, it's going to help a lot with the buses. And it's, I think, we can get those school pictures, you know, on that transition day. So if the buses are late getting to school on transition day, it's not going to be as problematic as, you know, when, when we, you know, have full classes with everybody, you know, in school. So something to, to think about. So Dr. Taylor, you said the sooner the better on this. So you think we need to, to, to act on it at the next meeting?
I do. I, I think that the change that you're talking about does make sense. And certainly, that can be something that the board thinks about over the next couple of weeks. Again, the most substantive changes actually are within the months and not, we very intentionally tried to leave the winter holiday as alone as possible. And we are still, we're not shifting the weeks of start and whatnot. So I, I think, I think we're there. It's, we're talking about tweaks at this point, not substantive wholesale calendar changes, because it is very late. And, and we don't want to put families out. I, I know that, that there were some families that also have reached out and said, thank goodness you stuck some days on long weekends, and that that was a help, too. It's not all negative in terms of reaction to this. But I think that there is a gap in terms of, one, folks understanding what we're trying to accomplish here and trying to make that first week a little bit more easy to go with. And then, two, to, to make our, our teachers' existence a little bit more clearly defined, because that's something that they've asked for. And likewise, our parents have the weekend time with some of these, these days off versus it being in the middle of the week and random or not at a convenient time. So I think we're at a happy place where we, we could. But, and we're certainly amenable to making the change that, that, Madam Chair, you suggested. If the board thinks about it over the next several days, and, and there seems to be consensus behind that, we're, I think we're in a good place to do that.
Is there any objection from the board about bringing that back as an option? And the only, the, the only difference, everything would stay the same, except the 9th would be the transition day. Then we'd have three full school days, the 10th, 11th, and 12th. And then the 21st would be pink. And it would, the 21st of December would be a, a holiday.
I think you'd have a lot of, a lot of happy campers.
I'm kind of confused, though. I mean, if you give them the 21st as a holiday, they're, and they're saying that they're going to, kids aren't going to be there Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. So you give them Wednesday, so kids aren't there Monday or Tuesday. So I'm not really sure if that's like the golden ticket. I don't know. I'm, I'm doing it more for staff. I think, I mean, and, and this is just based on the limited response I've gotten to date. But also, historically, knowing how staff very much appreciates a full two weeks. And you would think, well, it's, you know, over, over a holiday or whatever. But if we made that 21st a holiday, then we would, they'd be coming back one, two weeks later for a, a workday.
Workday.
But it would, it would not be a student, students there. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to balance.
Yeah.
And, and I think, and it would also help, I think, families that have made arrangements for daycare or services up through August 5th. It would mean they would only have to deal with one day that, that, well, maybe two, possibly two, if they don't have a transitioning students. But it's, it's more than having to deal with three or, you know, three days that week. I don't know. And, and mostly, I'm, I'm listening to the teachers that are saying, I don't need seven workdays.
I get that.
Then. I'd rather have, I'd rather have it later on. That's all. And what is the 29th of May? It's pink? It's Memorial, oh, Memorial Day. Okay. I didn't know if it was something else we had to do.
Yeah. And so when this comes back, will there be that delineation of workdays versus PDL, professional development day? Sorry.
You have it in the, in the months already, but not in, in August. And we would fix that for August for you.
So we'll see that before we vote. Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have any sense of what that split will be? Is it like one professional development day, five? I mean-
So I can tell you right now, the first day, whatever that first day is that teachers come back, they need to spend it with their schools and with their principals. And that's typically largely developmental. We, we would like some time with them. We have some special events planned for August 5th. And there may be another day or a partial day that may be used for professional development, both school and division level at some point during that week. So it would be between two and a half to three days. That would be development. So having a little extra time for, for the classroom teachers to have, to, to put their classroom together does make a difference. And we definitely want to account for that. But we also want to say, these are the untouchable days that we will leave you alone, and you can do your job. And you will have this time, and no one will bother you, I think is pretty critically important.
Have we have, is that something we normally do? Is this comparable? And, I mean, I know that there may be extra days given to them if we adjust the calendar.
If we have, we've not communicated it in this way before.
Okay.
It's pretty much been site-based, and there's, there's been concerns expressed. depending on what school you're in and, you know, how the administration sets the requirements for, for those days. So this way it's set centrally and everyone will know this is their, their own time, you know, in the classroom.
Are we still going to do the elementary school, like night, the middle school night and the high school night? And will they fall in that first week of August or where would, can, well, can you bring that back for us?
Yeah. A lot of that's going to depend on where you land, candidly.
Right.
Because there, there may be advantages to, to, to doing it the, the week of the eighth or there may be advantages to doing it the week before. And it does largely depend. We could also stack them on one night and make it, yeah, which is not desirable.
We can't do that to Ms. Sigmund. She can't spread herself that far.
You know, I'm just going to say that there are options, but it's largely going to be driven by what you all decide.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Chase.
Yeah. I don't know if this is a typo, but it says that K six and nine has 176 days and then one through five, seven through eight, 10 through 12 have 177. Is that supposed to be flipped? Okay. So just, just.
All right. So does the board want this to come back or do you want to consider trading the, the ninth for the, ninth of August for the 21st of December? I mean, it's, it's, it's really up to the board. I'm just trying to be responsive to the, the, the teachers that have, have, have reached out.
I, I would say bring both of them back and then we'll see what we hear, if we hear anything.
Right. And, and then I think that would be a good opportunity for, you know, for people to communicate. But, and parents as well, parents as well. All right. Well, that brings us to adoption of the FY23 school board budget.
Madam Chair, we recommend that you adopt the budget, although the county has to do their part first. And we put this on for information because this will come back to you as an action item next meeting. And, and so following some internal board procedures of making sure that you have this for information, we did want to give you a status update as to kind of where we are in the process and what we expect. We do have some time set aside for the board to have a work session before its next meeting in April so that you can make adjustments as needed in terms of budget reconciliation. And Mr. Fulmer, if you have any other information to share, an update, you're welcome to do so at this time.
Sure. Good evening. Not an extensive update. As, as Dr. Taylor mentioned, we will have a work session. The county is, is going to adopt a tax rate and a budget next week and then we'll have about a week to review those final amounts. We'll have the work session and, and bring that back to the full board. We discussed a little bit at Fab and we'll discuss again at the upcoming Fab this Thursday. But since the superintendent's budget and since the school board's approved budget, we have seen some increases in utilities, also as Josh mentioned as well. So, and fuel prices, if anybody has noticed, have, have gone up a few dollars a gallon. And so we're anticipating an increase over what we originally had budgeted for not only utilities, but fuel also. So those are some of the, some of the big ticket items that we're going to have to not only adjust to what the Board of Supervisors gives, we're going to need to increase some of our expenditures that we had originally budgeted.
I was just going to say, and I don't know, Madam Chair, if we want to think about this, but in the past, we have sometimes met on a Saturday morning to do this. I'm just concerned that if our only work session is Tuesday before we're supposed to vote on it, that we may not have enough time to make that vote. And I'm, I mean, we could always, I mean, we can theoretically push it off. We have done that in the past. But I know that it's good to get contracts out and all of that kind of thing. Not that I really want to have this meeting, but I'm thinking that it may be needed.
And perhaps what we can do is make that decision after the Board of Supervisors sets the rate and we know what we're going to get from them and we can consult with Dr. Warner, who's the head of the Fab, to see, you know, if, if, if we need to have an additional work session.
But then we may want to keep that Saturday.
You're looking at April 23rd, Saturday of the 23rd as a potential hold then.
Yeah.
And to let you know, I-
Half a day, right? Half a day. Morning. Saturday morning.
As of right now, it looks like the Board of Supervisors plans on funding us at the innate million dollar increase, about 6% of the county transfer increase from the prior year, which is what we had anticipated in the superintendent's budget and then we had the increases that the school board asked us to include. So we kind of have an idea of where we're going. And so Dr. Taylor and I are, are already kind of discussing that and then we'll discuss with the Fab on Thursday. And so going into the following Tuesday, if that's the first time we meet, I think we'll have a couple of steps that we've moved towards, but there will be some decisions to make.
Okay. So perhaps when, when, when Fab meets on Thursday, you can talk about the, the need for a special meeting, you know, based on the, you know, the projected funding and, you know, any, any change from that. So.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Last but not least, 1310, and it's timely because it's only 10 o'clock. Discussion of a board member's request for an amendment to the Order of Business for school board meetings to ensure that all action items are voted upon no later than 10:30 PM. Ms. Guy, would you like to lead us in this discussion?
No, I would not. So I, I'll get her back on this one.
I will absolutely get her back on this one. I completely agree. I think once we start getting into like the 11:30 hour, your brain cells start to, well, let's face it, they start to fall off and, and it's just really hard to think. And especially when the topics are so, when, when we have those topics that are going to keep us here that long. I mean, I don't know. I know we have to follow Robert's rules. So I don't know if Robert would hit me in the back of the head for saying, stop the topic and come back another day, but I feel sometimes too like decision-making on a, you know, for a hairpin trigger is really hard as well because we get hit with a lot of like, you know, the emotionality of things too. And by one o'clock in the morning, you know, I've got a handkerchief in one hand and a, you know, something else over here. And I, I'm, it's hard to know what weighs up. So I, I think it's a great idea. I don't, I think it wouldn't hurt us to say, we have to draw a stopping point, even if we allow for, you know, public comment clearly to go on, I think. I mean, I don't want to add any extra meetings either, but I think it's important for us to know that when you get tired, you just, sometimes you just don't make good decisions.
And yeah, I, I would like to note that the experience we've had this year is unlike almost any other year. I, I can recall one other topic and it was very, very controversial where we made a decision after midnight. But, but other than that, in, in a long, long time, we have not had what we had this year. So this is not your, your, your typical year. Thank goodness, right? The, the, you know, any, any other comments? Dr. Chase?
Yeah. I mean, I guess my concern is that if you say after 10:30, we don't vote, that, that could set us up for, if I don't want the vote to happen, I'm going to come with all, all my peeps and we're going to keep the meeting going until 10:30 and then we don't do the vote. And then it could happen again at the following meeting. Everybody just comes back to talk to us again. So that, that would be my concern.
That's totally a me thing to think. Yeah. That's totally a me thing. How did I miss that?
But, but, I mean, we certainly do have the ability to restructure meetings where we say the only people who do public comment are people who signed up in advance. And of course, you have digital comment. We're also capable, in the past, when we have had many, many people, we, the, the chair along with the board can make the decision to limit how long public comment can last on a particular day. So we do have some options, but it would need to be the board's decision.
Dr. Warner?
I just, I'm concerned that we could also restrict it so that public comments were, were limited to what was on the agenda, so that we kind of minimize the number of topics that can be brought up. But there are things that we can do. I certainly understand that we get tired, but I do think that these were exceptions rather than the rule. And I think it's difficult to anticipate what those contentious issues might be and what those, when those times might be that we, we have meetings that drag out much longer than anticipated. But we do have some flexibility in how we establish the rules for public comment, which is what generally adds to the time. And I think the digital comment form that we've incorporated has helped us. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm reluctant to change anything at this point, although I do understand how difficult, you know, one o'clock in the morning, I'm not the sharpest tool either. I'm, I'm pretty much done for the day. Because we do have regular jobs besides this.
It's, it's early the next day. Starting over. Ms. Sigmund.
I had the same concerns. I, you know, one of the most important parts of our job is listening to public comment and I don't want to do anything to, to stifle that. In thinking about this, because I too would not like to spend nights, you know, overnights here into the wee hours of the morning, I didn't know how much flexibility we had with rearranging the order of things. I know that our policy dictates, you know, what all these section numbers are. It's not, you know, it's built into our policy to follow this structure, maybe looking at opportunities to rearrange, especially when we see like our digital public comment is longer than usual. We might want to reconsider what else is on the agenda that night in the essence of timeliness for all involved. You know, limiting presentations or something on a night where we know that we have something that is going to either take a lot of discussion from us up here and to include the public out there so that we are using everyone's time wisely. Because in addition to having our public out there, you know, we have our staff that are sometimes waiting through all of this to get to this point in the meeting. And then they also have to turn around and come back here to serve our, our community in the morning. So if, maybe we can use that digital public comment as a barometer and be honest with each other about the feedback we are getting, you know, through our email and in our, in our public and maybe be a little more proactive about what the agenda looks like or making agenda changes when we get here to accommodate for the most important parts of our job.
Ms. Randall?
Oh, I was just going to say, I, I just basically wanted a discussion about it, not necessarily knowing how I wanted something to be motioned. And I'm really hopeful that this is the exception and not the rule type year. But I just felt like something needed to be done. Ms. Sigmund brought it up. You know, some staff lives 45 minutes away. It's just, it's not safe, you know? They have to be at work at seven, wake up by at least six, like, you know? I'm probably the most unaffected as I don't have a nine to five or anything or anything else. So I'm just, I mean, I am exhausted sometimes, but I just feel like, you know, maybe we can restructure, like you guys were saying, you know, and, and I'm open to any type of possibility where one meeting is just an information meeting and the next meeting is a voting meeting. Then we can get the votes done and I'm still alert and can be intelligent, you know? But I'm open to, to anything. I don't want to limit public input. But we do have multiple ways that the public can communicate with us. It's not just coming to the meeting, so I don't feel super sensitive to that. I mean, you know, like, I'm not like, oh, if we limit it to two minutes or two and a half, we're really, we're damaging something because we have so many other venues for discussion. But that was it. Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
I will definitely say that you guys have been through the wringers of meeting times. Although I'll have to say during COVID, Dr. Warner and I, when we had presentations, it was every single week, all throughout the summer. We didn't have a break for that summer. But I will say that, you know, I mean, I just feel like there, if we have options and ways, Ms. Healy and I can talk about it too, as we put an agenda together, if we feel that we need to curtail comments or change orders or something like that. And if you guys see anything too, be open and, like you say, honest and commit to letting us know this is a problem and we'll listen.
And I, I just want to note that we have tried to make some adjustments, but when you have three, four hours of public comment, there's not too much you can do to, to, you know, to get to your, your workload, you know, before 11 o'clock, unfortunately. I mean, the last meeting was a good example. Dr. Taylor deferred his, you know, 100-day report until this evening. So we could appreciate it and not have it in advance of having to, to make those decisions. And something else we can think about is perhaps if, if we are in that position, and I don't think it will be a regular thing, but there will be times when, when we're going to be in that position again, that we take a break. I mean, we, we say we take 10 minutes, but we'll just say, well, we're going to take a 20-minute break and get some coffee or, you know, soda or water, whatever, and, you know, give us a chance to not talk to each other, but just go our own ways and, and regroup before we have to do it. Because I think a lot of times, you know, these decisions are very, they're difficult for us and, and they're also, you know, very important and, and difficult on our families and our staff. And, you know, I don't think it would be fair to, to make them wait for a decision as well. And I certainly wouldn't want to put us in the position of being victims of manipulation of the system if people could come and just talk and talk and talk until 10:30 and say, oops, okay, we're done. You can't, you can't take any, take any action. So certainly if, if people have suggestions, you know, we're, we're open to it. But we have tried not to load up the agendas on that night. The last meeting was an exception because we had two very, yes, significant topics that had, you know, they were, they were very emotional and to a certain extent controversial. And they both needed to be decided sooner rather than later. So the, the next steps could, could be taken, you know, to move forward. So that, that was not at all ideal. And, and I have not even asked the board, you know, to, you know, approve cutting back on the public comment period because with these, with these important and somewhat controversial decisions that we're engaging in, I think it's imperative that the public have a right to say, you know, what they want us to hear. You know, and we have a responsibility to listen. And if we set a time limit on that, then that means there may be some people who don't get heard. And I, I just, I don't want to, I, I didn't want to do that to the public, certainly if, and I, I'm not hearing that from the board. If, if there was a change in the board and, and you wanted that, certainly, you know, it, it could be raised. But I, I think we owe it to our, our community to listen to all who want to, to speak. And, and heavens knows there's more than one opportunity because we have infor- information. We get our emails, we get the digital comments. Well, the night it comes on for action. And it's, it's been, it's, it's, it's been, it's been a tough year. I mean, here it is now, you know, I was hoping this would be an early night and it's, you know, 10, 11 right now. We're almost done, which is better than we've done in the past. But, but we are, we are aiming for, you know, the nine o'clock range, right, Ms. Randall? That's, that's our goal. Nine o'clock. So that's, that's all I have to say. Is it, so this is something, I, I appreciate you bringing this discussion forward because it is important that we talk about it. And, and I'd say if, if it comes a point in the future that you want to re-raise it or anybody here wants to re-raise it, just let us know and we'll, we'll put it back on the agenda. So you're, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and thank you for, for bringing it up. Oh, yeah. Well, I, actually, I thought I was the, the second on the agenda and I see Dr. Warner here. Because when I first put it on, I, I, I said I was, I was your second, so I guess I'm your third. I'm, I'm putting it on. Okay. All right. Well, that brings us to the next board meeting. Unless we have a special meeting on that Saturday, which I hope we don't. Sorry. I know, I know Mr. Fulmer will be very disappointed if we can't have it, add an extra budget meeting, particularly on a Saturday. That brings us to the, the next regularly scheduled board meeting. It's April 26th and we are done. 10:13.